March eighth, twenty twenty-two Norfolk planning board meeting. Let me just make a roll call of those on the board who are present. I'm Mr. Wellington. Could you signal about your presence by saying present, please?
Hi, present.
Thank you. Mr. Peck.
Present.
Mr. Searle.
Well, Gary just froze.
Well, give him a second. Mr. Monford.
Present.
I'm off. I'm not on you, am I?
No, okay. Mr. Searle. Present, I hope.
Oh, you know what the problem is? There's two Garry's perhaps. I'm present, though.
Thank you. Very good. Okay. And Mr. Sullivan. Thank you. And we have with us, of course, our town planner this evening. Richard McCarthy, who has set up the meeting.
Present.
So. Good evening. The open meeting of the planning board is being conducted remotely, consistent with Governor Baker's executive order of March twelfth, twenty twenty. Due to the state of emergency in the Commonwealth due to the outbreak of the COVID nineteen virus. In order to mitigate the transmission of the COVID nineteen virus, we have been advised and directed by the Commonwealth that we may suspend public gatherings. And as such, the governor's order suspends the requirement of the open meeting law to have all meetings in a publicly accessible physical location. Further, all members of public bodies are allowed and encouraged to participate remotely. You can find this order posted on the town website, as well as the agenda materials for this meeting, which allow public bodies to be entirely remote so long as reasonable public access is afforded. So the public can follow along with the deliberations of the meeting. Ensuring public access does not necessarily ensure public participation, unless such participation is required by law. This meeting will feature public comment. For this meeting, the planning board is convening via the Zoom application as posted on the town's website, identifying how the public may join. All votes this evening is will be taken by roll call, as is required by the governor's proclamation. And with that, I believe we can turn to our first order of business, which is the ninety to one hundred Pond Street, twelve Sharon Avenue, solar field. So who is prepared this evening to speak to that? Rich, you want to lead us off?
Sure, I'll lead us off. So we had some back and forth between BSA Group and and Beta to address some of the outstanding items that were on their last peer review report. Those items are addressed and that gap has been closed. The larger one, which is something that I'm sure we'll spend some time on for sure, is the screening buffering of the solar arrays in relation to their visibility from Pond Street. And Phil is, Phil is with us this evening, so he can, you know, at some point confirm, you know, give an overview of the issues that have been previously identified and how them been addressed in the updated plans. I think perhaps I would give Brian co-hosting ability to share plans that might be a little bit easier for presentation standpoint.
You. All right, just let me, let me catch up. I failed to also acknowledge that Phil Paradis from the Beta Group, who is our technical support, is with us this evening as well. All right, go ahead and co-share that if you wish.
I'll do that. So you should have ability to share, Brian? Or, sorry, display.
Pardon me, sorry. Okay, I assume you're, I assume everybody's looking at my screen now, seeing the overall site plan slash planting plan.
Yep.
Yes.
Very good. I don't know how you wanted to work it, Mr. Chairman, if you wanted to hear from from the applicant first, or if you wanted to hear from your own consultant first, but be happy to, whichever way you want to move forward.
We'll, we'll, we'll let Phil start off, but there is one point I'd like to cover before we let Phil get going here. And that is we received feedback from, or you received feedback from the fire department, saying that they wish to have a a seven-foot wide area where they could run a pickup truck around the outside of the perimeter of the arrays in case of a fire. Have you been able to accommodate that?
Yes, we did do that.
All right, so does this, this drawing reflect that?
Yes, it does. So we had it, we already had it in most places. There were just a few areas where we had to push the fence further away from the, from the solar array to accomplish that, but we've done that with the plans that you have before you.
Okay, so they can get it.
Just for clarification, it was eight foot. Was that? Yeah.
Was eight foot? Okay, thank you, Chad. All right, so Phil, you want to talk to us about the, the review you've made and any open issues that may still remain?
Brian, you want to answer that?
He asked. I'm having a conversation with myself, being muted, sorry. So, so yeah, so I think a lot of the, so, so they provided a comprehensive list of waivers, which are, none of them are surprises or difficult, in our opinion. There is a few items that we didn't, we didn't obviously have contact with the fire department, so if if those are closed out for the fire department, that's fine. There is, yeah, I think we worked through all of them. You should have my letter dated today, yesterday. Today, today's eighth.
Yeah.
So indicating that they're all resolved, this, maybe a few conditions included in here, but the, the only outstanding thing is, and we didn't, I had my landscape architect look at the screening challenges. So I, I, I think bottom line, we, we both came to a consensus that I think it's best to have a condition that once the clearing is done, that the evaluation of the screening should be looked at. I don't have a problem with potentially the with the limit of work. Look, if I can share my screen, I, 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 I want to do the, the Google.
Sure, sure, sure. I can switch it up, so.
Oops.
I have that queued up as well, Phil, if you, the Google Earth street view, if that's where you were going.
Well, if you want to drive us through that and show it. Sorry, something's in my throat. But, yeah, okay. I don't have, if you have, you have access right now, I don't, but.
Yeah. Brian's gonna do it.
All right, so right now, this is probably the most recognizable place along Pond Street, or one of the more the existing paved turnout that exists. So right now, you know, we're looking back, the opening that you see here, just in front of the vehicle that's on Pond Street, that's the existing opening, and that's where our proposed road will empty out as well. So one of the perspectives that, that we gave you in our line of sight drawings is essentially, as close as I could get it, is this location, looking through this. And, you know, as you can see, there's a, it's pretty decent screening right in here. Now, some of this would be cleared out on the front side of that a little bit, but that's, that's one area where I have a line of sight drawing. The second area is probably trying to get.
Yeah, as you look at that, look at that stone, stone wall. I don't think the stone walls are shown correctly on the on the plan. Because that would be where the trees start, right at the stone wall.
But I would agree, the trees start at the stone wall.
But if you look at the plan, the, the, the walls aren't parallel with the street. So, but, so we, we have no idea where actually the, the clearing limits will be. If you go back to that turnout thing, you'll see that there's maybe ten feet behind it. But if you look at the plans, that's the limit of clearing as well. So I think, I think we have to determine, I think we have to determine, once the trees are cleared, or once, you know, what's going to be needed.
Yeah, and we, we agree with that, Phil, and as you know, we've had a note on the plan to that effect as well. So that's something the applicant is amenable to, as previously stated.
Right.
Phil, do I understand you correctly to say that the, the clearing comes within ten feet of the road?
So I, I don't know if you have the plans in front of you, but there's a turnout right there. The turnout right there.
Yeah, yeah.
Behind that, it looks like it's, it, you know, there's a grass section for about, I don't know, maybe ten feet, I, you know, measure it from here, but. And then if you look at the plans, that turnout, the ten feet beyond the turnout is, is essentially the, the clearing line, so. So, I mean, that's just one instance. You know, I have no idea if they can, you know, actually save some trees, you know, what's going to be left there.
I suggest we go back and get an accurate plan then. This wooded area from the turnout down to the clearing where the other developer cleared the area for a site, this wood should be mostly protected. But if the plan doesn't depict the actual setting on the, on the site, the plan obviously has to be redone.
Yeah, I would, I would agree with that. Anyway, can you put the plan back up so we can take a quick look at that?
So I, I guess I would disagree with the characterization that the plan is not accurately depicted. I mean, we located all of these features with, you know, with the total station. The walls are shown here. The existing tree line is shown here. It shows it stopping at the hydrant, which is correct. What you're looking here is the proposed cutback. So I, I, I guess I'm not clear, Phil, what you feel is not shown accurately here.
Where's the, where's the turn in?
The turn in is, is, yeah.
Right here.
Where's, where is it?
This is the paved apron right here.
Yeah, so that shows you're cutting right up to the front of the apron.
With the
cor- correct. And so what we, and that's why we said that we would plant trees as necessary to enhance the screening. I did show a few trees here. But that's why we have that catch-all note.
Well, I think, I think the, the fence, for example, is must be thirty feet off the road, something like that. Why can't you leave the trees between the fence and the road?
There's grading.
It's a slope, yeah.
There's grading, proposed grading, which is one of the reasons why, if, if we can get to it, the, the line of sight, why you're not going to see any of these here, because there's a two-to-one slope which is proposed out in front. So it's, even if you can see through the trees, you're going to be looking up through the canopy, the two-to-one slope, and then, you know, we can get to that later, but it's.
What it looks like, all right, so what it looks like, your proposal is to cut down all the trees and then replant new trees, which would provide the barrier, the visual barrier that you're referring to, is that right?
No, we're not proposing to cut down all the trees. We are, in this area, it does get fairly close to the existing, to the stone wall and to the, to the turnaround area. Yes, it does get close in that area.
The stone wall is almost on the road.
To accomplish the grading.
Yeah, there is no. It was almost on the road.
Right, and there's no trees outs- outside of the stone wall, so.
Walter, just for myself speaking, I mean, they're clearing twenty-something acres for solar fields. The wooded area, which is the most important, from where the turnout is now, down to where the proposed road is going, I don't want those trees touched. I don't care what they're going to do, whether they have to put back the solar panels or change grading, but I do not want that woods cut. And I thought there was going to be a fifty-foot buffer of trees from the street to where the clearing started.
Yeah, there, there's a significant buffer right here.
And I want the whole, I want the whole thing buffered. The woods we just showed on the plan from the turnout, we're leaving the woods before the turnout, I'm assuming, is that correct?
So you're talking from right here?
From there to the left, we're leaving those woods?
No, this is being, there's a cutback to, because of the site grading that's involved.
In that case, on, on this plan, as far as I'm concerned, for my vote, I don't want the woods touched from the, the far-left corner of this plan to where the access road is. I don't want all those trees made. That'll just open up the whole, it ruins the whole perspective of that coming down Pond Street. It just, to me, that's, that's not good. That's like sticking too many panels in for the excuse of grading and destroy this whole area coming down Pond Street. I'm not for that. I don't know how the other board members feel, but I am not destroying those woods. Excuse me?
Sorry, go ahead.
I'm not, I'm not, for the purpose of maybe getting a few less solar panels, I am not for clearing out those woods.
I'd like to see those. I was just going to say, I'd like to see the line of sight that you've been speaking of.
All right. Can everyone see this?
Yeah.
So this is a schematic representation, drawn to scale, of what you see here in gray are the existing trees. What you see here is the proposed two-to-one slope. And then beyond that, on top of the slope, you'll see the panels, which are, which start right here, going back. There's the slope, there's the existing tree line that they'll be, that's going to be preserved. That's about thirty feet of trees right in there.
So we went from fifty to thirty.
So you can see from this graphic that if you can look up through, at this angle, through the canopy, you'll see, that you're going to see this slope, you might see the top of, of the first row of panels, and that's it. You're not going to see any of this.
What's the elevation change from the street to the top of that?
The elevation change from the street. So it's approximately two sixteen up to two forty-three. So twenty-seven feet in this particular location.
If you took the, the slope line and moved it to the right, an additional fifty feet, you'd lose one row of, of panels, but preserve all those trees. That's what it looks like on this drawing.
Brian, maybe it would help if you told us why the grading is necessary, as you proposed it.
So the grading is necessary because there are some existing slopes and up there that are, that are just too steep. So we're trying to get a nice, more level area. But in addition to that, the biggest thing that we have to meet is we have to bring a, a road, an access road from Pond Street back to the police station. So, you know, we did have to, that's the most important thing. We have to make sure that that road is graded properly.
Well, my perspective comes from something different. I'm assuming you're a talented engineer, and I know all about grading. I want to, whether you lose panels or not, I don't really care. What I do care about is protecting the wooded area going down Pond Street. I don't want twenty feet of, of natural woods there, which means that in a fifteen-foot area, there may be one tree. And I don't want to take down trees and replace them with other trees, God forbid what size they may be. I want that whole wooded line down. Again, I'm only one person, but I'm going to tell you how I feel about it. And unless all of that woods is protected, and you push this whole panel, panel array back, you won't have my vote.
John, I'm not sure I understand, because isn't most of that lot wooded? I mean, so I guess I'm not understanding what you're.
Most of those existing trees, if he leaves, if he leaves, you know, the last meeting it was fifty feet, now it's thirty. So I really don't know how long it's going to be, how, how, how many trees he's keeping. What I'm saying is, a thirty-foot buffer with, with forested trees is nothing. It's not like they're stacked side by side for blockage. You need a lot more depth than that. And when they leave thirty feet of existing high oak trees or maple, whatever, you'll see right through that. And I want most of that woods protected. Again, if you look at the minutes to a meeting ago, it was a fifty-foot buffer. Now it's left. Now it looks like to me that the stone wall probably is closer to the street than what this plan shows. It's just a guess from looking at the original picture. I, I, I fear that we're going to have one of these problems. It has happened in Norfolk over the years, and we destroy wooded area, and we replace them with little stick trees around the ways. So unless I get content that I see all of this woods along Pond Street, so I don't see through, then I have an issue with it.
Yeah, the, the way this is drawn, the apron in of that cutout, right in the middle of the drawing there, ends maybe five feet from the, the tree line. But really, the trees don't start for ten feet from the, from the end of that apron. So there's not going to be any trees left if you cut to, to what you're proposing there on that, on that tree cut line.
If the woods, if the woods are left there, Walter, there should be no room to put in a replacement tree. It would never grow. It should be all shaded.
Exactly, and I think the trees are probably going to go back, at, at the moment, go, the cut line, I'll be back about at the top of the, the slope there somewhere, at least, if not further back.
This is going to be pushed back off of the street.
Absolutely. But that's my vote too. Gary Searle, what do you think?
I, I can't recall the fifty-foot dimension, but I'll, I'll take you at your word on that. You know, I, I travel up and down Pond Street all the time. I, I don't see this as the biggest I saw that I come across in the past. I, I do not know what the minimum buffer should be, John, and if there's a minimum buffer and he's not complying with that, then he should comply with it. And aside from that, I don't see where we should be imposing other restrictions beyond what the requirements are.
Well, there is no minimum buffer per se, Gary. All I'm saying is, if you're going to clear out twenty-eight acres of vegetation, at least along the travel pathway, we shouldn't be seeing that. That's what I'm saying.
Yeah, yeah. Chad, what, what's your feeling? Thank you, Gary.
In other cases.
Go ahead, Gary, I'm sorry.
I, I, there's been other cases where people come in, maybe it's residential, and the statements have been made that people can clear cuts to the edge of their property. This is a commercial property. Yes, we like to keep the land pristine. People need to maximize the benefit of the property that they purchased. So and when I look at the elevations, I do not see that much harm from driving in a car. There's, I, I, I don't see where it is that burdensome to, to develop it the way the person is proposing.
Okay, thank you. Chad, what, what's your feeling?
I, I have a similar feeling as what Gary is saying, is if, if you look at the, the sightlines that they drew, I don't think you're going to see this solar farm from driving by, because you've got these other, you know, those are all, all those grayed-out trees are existing and it's going to be really hard to see through there. Now, you will, where that apron is, as, as I think Walter had mentioned, where that apron is, and that there's about ten feet of grass, so I mean, there's not going to, that one, that spot there, there will be no trees when it's all said and done. So I think that comment that we talked about adding there is, let's evaluate the situation once it's cut and make, make adjustments, because I think we will need to add some more trees to, to the, maybe to the slope of the hill. I mean, we'll need to do something to screen it at that apron. Because once it's cut, there's not going to be anything there in that particular spot. But I have similar feelings as Gary does, is that I don't think it's going to be a a huge problem, given the grade change and the existing trees that we are, that they are leaving. Just to clarify it, it will be, that slope will be seeded with the meadow mix, and the grasses are allowed to grow up between six to twelve inches high in their mode a couple of times a year. So it's not the most unsightly. It's not like you're going to be looking at pavement or concrete or anything like that. And again, this will be through a chain-link fence, a seven-foot-high chain-link fence.
Chris, what's your feeling?
Yeah, I was going to ask specifically about the erosion control material being placed on the grade. As well, can we just see the Google Earth image again? Specifically from the apron perspective?
Everybody seeing that?
No, just the.
Look at the drawings.
I'm sorry?
Was just seeing the drawings right now?
Oh, okay, bear with me.
Maybe you were just sharing the application and not the window, the screen. There we go.
Yeah, so for me, I, I understand that this image is, you know, from twenty nineteen, but I'm not seeing a, a ton of old, old growth trees here, probably twenty, twenty-five years max. A lot of it's young growth. Pines in that area. Can you go a little bit more towards the right? So I, I'm not as concerned with it, and there also seems to be a substantial dip in this. My question's more around the, the utility of the apron, and if there's any possibility for that to go away. Because as we look to replant trees, if we gain back that space and level out the roadway so that that apron doesn't exist anymore, it provides us with additional space to plant new trees if we so wish. And I don't know whether that would be the town responsibility, or if that would be something that we could ask the developer to do.
That's a great question, yeah.
I would, my first take would be, we would be asking the developer, you know, not, not the town to do that. And secondly, I would think, so Blair, that's one fifteen, that's, but that's ours. I know it's a state number, but that's our right away there, right?
That is correct.
Okay, so I would think, you know, removing asphalt and planting some trees would be under our local jurisdiction, R being the DPW. If that was.
Yeah, you could plant trees there. I mean, and the type of trees, obviously, if you planted some balsam fir, something with some lower growth on them, it would certainly help shade that a little bit.
At this, Gary Sullivan, what's your view in this?
Yeah, I think the plan as it exists is a fair compromise. I, I don't see a ton of issues. I would clearly love wilderness to stay intact forever, but that's not going to be the case here, whichever way we go, so. You know, I'm, I'm more or less fine with the plan as presented.
It was, just a question from the pavement to the stone wall. Down about thirty, forty feet past the sign. That looks like about twenty or so feet of grass.
Yeah.
Does the engineer know?
I can get your measurement as we're talking.
That'd be great. Because if that's twenty feet, then you're talking ten more feet of trees, which is one tree and then everything's cleared.
Yeah, I, I, one of the things I'd like to see, uh, i- is to go from the, the, the corner. Of the lot, which is, uh, in this view, sort of behind us to our right. Um, down to the, uh, area where the, the road is going to cut, come out from the police station. And stake out the, 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 the cut line that you're proposing. And then I'll go down there with, uh, whoever else on the, on the board. And the town planner a- and, uh, we'll walk that line and take a look at what's going to be left. Uh, I think that's going to really help us, um, i- in this decision as to what we want to do. And that's not that far to, to stake out. You're going to have to stake it out anyway if you're going to cut it.
Yeah, and that, so in terms of on that note, um. It, it does make a lot of sense, Brian and Daniel. In terms of the planning board. If, uh, hopefully they vote to, uh. For a March thirtieth, uh, public hearing on some proposed zoning articles. So if the board was okay. They could maybe put this on that agenda as well to finalize this point. As an option and not.
Brian, did you get that footage for the grass?
I'm loo- I'm looking it up as we speak. That's why I stopped my screen share.
Thank you.
Cause Daniel, I know you're on the line. Um, as a practical matter, you've heard some of the commentary. In order to get this approval, you need four out of five votes. Um, and in terms of the vote, Gary Sullivan, while he's. Well-respected associate member as it return, as it relates to the site plan approval, he's not a voting member. So the folks that would be sitting on this permit you heard from, which is John Wellington, Walter Byron, Chris Monford, Gary Searle and Chad Peck. So if you, uh, are unable to obtain four out of five. It would be a denial by default to carry the, to carry the super majority vote. So I just want to. Make you aware of that in terms of where we're at, in terms of the landscape of things from a per- approval standpoint.
Yep, understood. Thanks for, uh, clarifying that. Okay.
I, I think based on what Phil has said earlier in the evening. Um, the only remaining issue here is, uh, the, the screening of, of the. Of the solar field from view. Um, and since we're on that topic, uh, I'd like to ask. For you to describe what screening would remain or would be proposed to be planted. In the, in the case of the residences that are abut the, the field as well. Just so we know what those folks are going to have for visibility, um, of the field.
There, there are no abutting residences, uh, no residential homes but a- any portion of this parcel. So. Um, just, just wanted to make sure that was clear.
That wasn't the case when we looked at this earlier. There were, uh, the Hamlin's for one and, uh, there was two others, as I recall, total of three.
Three residential homes?
Yeah, they could, um, Brian, can you pull up the air, the. Overview so it shows the properties surrounding the site?
Yep, um, sure, hold on. So are those, are those.
Maybe wrong on that, but that's my recollection.
No, I, I think, I think you're sort of right there, Walter. There are, I think, some homes. But I think those properties are zone commercial.
Nevertheless, if people are living there, uh.
Right.
Uh, you'd like to give them some sort of break.
What I'm going to do is I'm gonna, well, he's trying, I'm going to go on to the, our GIS and pull up the.
I mean, this is the, this is the property right in here. Here's ninety Pond Street. So there, this would be the only residentially zoned area, but there's no residences here. Everything else around it is commercial.
I, I, I appreciate that. Move, move the, the view up a little bit if you would please. And let's, uh, all right, now move it to the right a little bit, please. No, the other way, sorry. Okay, now, uh, show me where Pond Street is.
Pond Street's right up here.
Yeah.
Okay, yeah, all right. So, so move the whole, whole view, uh, to the left. Uh, other way to the left.
Other left.
Yeah, the other left. Uh, okay, thank you. Uh, all right, so now we're, we're looking at, uh, uh.
Pond Street in one A is the main interchange there.
Yeah, these are commercial slash, you know, industrial properties in here. Here's our site. Here, at the police station back here, the water tower here.
Right. Brian, can you zoom in a little bit closer? So the, the, the properties that are on the, the lower right-hand side of the screen. Well, towards the lo- the right south, well, yeah.
The, the, these commercial sites in here.
Just so they understand in terms of the location. So next to, um, not, not that, not that close, but.
Well, Richard, could you point out the Hamlin's house?
Yeah.
I, I can't, well, can I, can you see my pointer? I need to take control of that.
You, you want me to stop the share?
Um, I think I'll have to switch so I can pull it up and then you do it. Yeah, stop.
Well, the cabinet shop is, is right there.
I want to get that dimension, uh, that I was looking at earlier to answer the question.
Yeah, so I'm gonna, just bear with me. I'll pull up the map, well, the GIS with the, with the imagery. And, uh, so we can. View it. And I'll have the, and the, what I'll pull up too is it has the property boundary. So I think it'll, it'll. Give a better representation of the location.
Sure. If, if I could answer the question earlier, um, we were looking at the turnaround, that paved turnaround that exists on Pond Street. And the question was asked, if we were standing about thirty feet, um, south of that. What would be the distance to the stone wall and then to the proposed tree line, as I understood it? So. From the curbing at that location, about thirty feet back, going straight into the site. The stone wall. Is approximately twenty feet. And then we have about fifteen to sixteen feet beyond the wall. To where the tree line cutback would be. So in that worst case scenario, where the most. Um, forward tree clearing is. There would be twelve feet at that location, thirty feet down, thirty feet south of the paved turnaround.
I want to go and buy what you said and what you said was that there was a, uh. A thirty foot buffer and there's twenty-five feet of grass that leaves five feet in some areas of trees, which is one tree. If you get twelve feet of trees, that still is going to be one tree before you see through going up the hill.
Yeah, it, it, the distance varies, obviously.
So most of, most of, most of the, most of the protected so-called existing woodland is grass. That's my point.
Yeah, yeah, I see. How you doing, Rich?
Okay. So can you see my screen?
Uh, there we go.
Walter, I think what might be helpful too is they, like we do in residential subdivisions before clearing. Have them, uh, post a cut line, stake it out.
Yeah.
And if members want to go see exactly where the line's going to be for clearance, you'll be able to see the line.
That's what I proposed a few minutes ago. Go ahead. All right, so here, here we are, um.
So the neighbor to the south is, uh, Lee Gentile, which was just before you, which was two twenty-eight Denham Streets. See where my cursor is right here?
Yeah.
Okay, and then this property here. Is the commercial property, which is one oh four Pond Street, which is the garage that you, that are selling, uh. They fix cars and sell, uh, used cars. There, uh, so in terms of the Hamlin property. Oh. That wasn't good. Let me zoom back in, sorry. So Mr. The Hamlin, Mr. The Hamlin property, house is right here, my cursor is.
Yeah.
And then this is another Johnson, I forget the company, but they have, they have the house there, but they have the commercial business behind it.
Yeah.
And so this is actually, this one here is a house, but it's not a butter to it.
Not a direct butter. I agree.
Butter. So there aren't any direct, uh, residential butters.
Oh, keep walking up. What's the next one above that?
Oops, sorry. This next one up here?
Yeah.
So that's the garage. I'll show you.
Can you do street view too, Rich?
I can switch to it if I need to, but so this is the.
Yeah, that's one oh four, right? Okay.
Yeah. It's one oh four. And then this here. Who's this? There's nothing's vacant, uh, piece there. And actually purchasing that one too. Isn't that correct, Daniel? I think you got.
Uh, one oh two is, is not one of the ones we're purchasing.
No, you're not.
Uh, uh, we're purchasing a few of the others that are on either side of the main warehouse that you're going to come up to. So there's no, there's no residential homes on, on that abut are, are property.
Yeah, thank you. I'm, I'm satisfied on that point. Thank you.
Okay.
All right, so, uh, my request, uh, echoed by Mr. Weddleton is would you please stake out the, the cut line? From the, from the corner of the lot that's closest to town center, down to where the road is going to, uh, come through from the police station. And then, uh, let us know and, and the, the, uh, members of the board who, who can, uh. Gather will, will walk that line along with, uh, any of your representatives that you'd like and the town planner. And we'll get a view of where you propose to cut those trees. And then we'll, we'll, uh, as, as Rich said, put this item on the agenda for our, uh, March thirtieth, uh, proposed. Special planning board meeting and, uh, be able to, uh, vote on it.
So is that a, is that just a poll of the board? Is that acceptable to do the, which I suggested about that special meeting?
Works for me.
All right.
Yep, I'll be there.
What day was that?
So March thirtieth?
Wednesday, March thirtieth, yeah.
It will be remote?
Should be fun.
Yep. Yeah. So then what I would like first is a vote to set that date. That way then they can then, then the board, then you can continue it to that date. Does that make sense?
Yep.
Yeah, okay. So Chair will entertain a motion to call a special planning board meeting on Wednesday, March thirtieth. Do we have a sec?
Second.
All right, we have, um. A motion and a second, uh, and we'll take a roll call vote. Mr. Weddleton.
Hi.
Mr. Peck.
Aye.
Mr. Searle.
Aye.
Mr. Monford.
Aye.
And Chair votes aye. Okay, so we have that for you, Rich.
So then, uh, what I would ask is a, a motion to continue this to seven thirty, because we anticipated.
Issues, yeah, right.
Yeah, so.
Okay. All right, so Chair will entertain a motion to, uh, add to that agenda that evening at, uh, seven thirty PM. A continuance of this, uh, public hearing on. The proposed solar panel array at ninety to one hundred Pond Street.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Any further discussion?
As for clarification, sir?
Certainly.
The, we're staking it out from the proposed access road intersection to the north or to the southern end.
I want to take up the whole, the whole frontage of the property on.
Yeah, from.
Where are you cutting?
From there to the, to the end of the property that's closest to town center. Which is west, actually, was actually west.
So, but the whole frontage is, I heard the whole frontage, is that?
Correct, well.
Okay, thank you.
Yep, all right.
Did that motion include seven thirty? I don't recall here.
Um, it, it's so amended.
All right, thank you.
All right, so, uh, Mr. Weddleton.
Aye.
Mr. Peck.
Aye.
Mr. Monford.
Aye.
Mr. Searle.
Aye.
That Chair votes aye. Okay, so we have that on the agenda at seven thirty on the thirtieth. Is there any other business relative to, uh, the solar array this evening?
Uh, no, that concludes that project for tonight.
Anything from the developer that they wish to say before we move on to the next agenda item? Hearing none, then thank you gentlemen, and, uh, we'll see you on the thirtieth. And between now and then, hopefully we'll be able to, uh, walk the cut line, um, a proposed cut line. And, uh, it most likely will be a, a, a weekend, a day, Saturday or a Sunday. To allow, uh, board members who are working during the week to, uh, gather with us. Although it could be in, during the week, we'd have to figure that out at, at the time. Once you tell us that the cut line, uh, proposed cut line is available.
I will notify Richard as soon as that's ready.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, fellas. We have a, a fellow raising his hand. Yes, sir.
Oh, it's just waving goodbye. Sorry, yeah. All right, have, have a good night.
Indeed, indeed. Okay, have a good night. All right, um, moving on, our next item is a MacArthur Ave definitive subdivision, uh, roadway improvement plan. Uh, who is to speak to that?
Good evening, Mr. Chairman. Ted Cannon on behalf of the applicant. I'm joined tonight, uh, uh, with, uh, the applicant Franz Burke and Rob Truax from GLM Engineering. Uh, and I know that, uh, Phil has had a chance to take a look at, uh, some of Rob's work and Rob's responded to that. So, um, with that, I'll sort of let either Phil or Rob maybe address, uh, some of those, uh, issues that they've sort of mulled over.
Yep, all right. Good evening, Ted, Phil and, and Rob. Go ahead.
Thank you.
Who do you want?
Let's see, let's just have Phil, um, comment first and then the, your gentleman can, can add, uh, your.
You want me to display the plan or does Rob want to?
Display the plan and, and give us your comments, Phil.
All right, I'll, I'll display it and then, all right.
Okay, there you go.
Okay, so, uh, Beta was asked to review the stormwater for this project, um. So, and, uh, we did, we provided a letter, um, let's see, that was January twenty-eighth. Uh, we received the responses, comments, we only had five, four, four comments. Um, uh, all, all four of them are, are addressed with the updated plan. Primarily, it involved, uh, providing some low impact development, uh, options for the additional impervious. I think that area is. Uh, it's outside the hundred foot buffer, but it, it, it goes right down to the pond there, so. Um. So they've added, uh, stone trench around the pavement so that it would be, uh, these are a soils, so they will infiltrate. Uh, they added a, uh, infiltration system for the roof on that lot. Um, they added some erosion controls and. Yeah, existing, uh, clarified some of the existing contours, so.
All right, so as your letter of March 7th indicates, all these issues are resolved. Thank you, Phil. Anything else before we ask them to comment?
Nope.
Okay, thanks. All right, gentlemen, anything you'd like to say? Please do so.
Sure, Mr. Cannon, Rob Truax, GLM Engineering. The only other thing we provided was we did do a soil test within the roadway. That's the only additional that was asked for for soil testing. We did a test pit right in the center, in the intersection.
Uh huh.
Just to show that there was still consistent soils with what we found on the site, which was gravels and sands. So that, that's been added to the plan as well.
Yeah, and, and there was, is what you're saying.
Correct.
Okay, thanks. All right, any comments or questions from board members?
Nope.
Any comments or questions from anyone on the Zoom call here this evening?
Uh, yes, Mr. Byron, I do. It's Mike Ferrera.
Hi, Mike.
One of the butters up at the end of the road. Um, I have the same concerns I had at the last meeting. The disposition of MacArthur Avenue was voted on 17 years ago at the request of the DPW to abandon the road because of accessibility for emergency vehicles. I have an open request to the fire department to come up and evaluate that site as well. I will, like, obviously keep you posted when I get back from, when I hear back from them. Beyond that, all I would ask is that, much like there were board members with concerns on the last item, with existing topography, existing landscape, existing butters, which of course, which I am one, I would ask that anybody that's going to vote or adjudicate this matter to come out here and walk the site, much like you're going to do on the Pond Street site. So that, that's my request to, to take into yourself what the existing topography looks like up here. It's one thing to look at it two dimensionally on this plan, but it's a completely different take once you're actually on it.
And, and, and the expectation that you would have if, if the board were to accept that request is what, what, that we would do what?
I would just like you to render an opinion based on actually visualizing the site.
I see, all right. Well, there's a, a proposal in front of the board. Board members, how do you feel about that? Mr. Weddleton?
Well, the applicant has complied with all the town rules and regulations. I think the plan really shows a good, a good project. It'll be tough because of the, the elevations, but still I think that it all fits within the proper rates of the town. Hunter Ave is being constructed under town specs for a, a B road, is that it?
Residential. Well, what do you, what's the width on here? I'm trying to see 24, I gotta zoom in.
24.
24, yeah.
Hunter's 24.
Yeah, so it's, it's mimicking what out, without, what is out there on the end of, what's out there in Hunter.
Okay, Mr. Peck?
Um, I have been out to that site. It's probably been a year and a half since I was out there, but I, I have been out to that site. It's a challenging lot, very, very steep. The, you know, it looks like they've met all the requirements, Beta's satisfied. Um, I, I think, like I said, it's going to be a challenging project, but it looks like they've met all the requirements.
Mm-hmm, okay, thank you. Mr. Searle?
I would echo the same thing. The plan looks viable and they should be allowed to proceed.
Okay, Mr. Monfort?
100% agreement with all statements that have been made.
Yeah, I, I understand that the about is concerned. It is a challenging lot. However, the, the, the top, topography is, is adequately represented here by the very close lines describing the, the hill. And as others have pointed out, it has been reviewed by our technical people and complies with all the requirements, so I think I'm prepared to vote this evening to close the public hearing and approve the, the project. That's my personal view. Is there any other comment from? Anyone, either the, the property owner or the board or anyone else in the audience? Well, if not, then Rich, I believe the next step is to close the public hearing, is that correct?
Yep, yeah, you, next step, close the public hearing and.
Right.
And I would need to prepare, you know, a decision for the board to review.
Right, we, we would take a vote to, after the public hearing is closed, to approve the project, right?
Yeah, so you close the public hearing, then I would put together a decision for the board to review and vote.
Right.
At the next meeting.
Right.
Question is, you want to? Can we go to, is it the 12th or the 30th? That would be my, I guess, only question in terms of drafting that you'd be looking to have.
Yeah, well, in, in terms of whether it's the 30th or the 12th of April, kind of would depend on availability of the draft, I think. All right, so let's, let's, Chair will entertain a, a motion to close the public hearing on MacArthur Ave definitive subdivision roadway improvement plan. Do we have a motion?
So moved.
Do we have a second?
Second.
All right, any further discussion before we vote? Hearing none, Mr. Peck?
Aye.
Mr. Weddleton?
Aye.
Mr. Searle?
Aye.
Mr. Monfort? Chair votes aye, and Mr. Sullivan, what would your opinion be?
Aye.
Thank you. All right, then we direct our town planner to prepare a decision which we will vote on at our next meeting, either on the 30th or on the 12th of April. Anything else, gentlemen, before we join next?
No, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank, thank you all. Have a good evening.
Okay, thanks Ted, take care.
Yep.
All right, moving along, our next item is 262 Dedham Street Site Plans Special Permit Approval and Stormwater Management Permit. I believe we need to open this one up with a reading of the public hearing.
Notice is hereby given in accordance with Mass GL Section 40A and the Norfolk zoning bylaws, Section F11, a public hearing will be held on Tuesday, March 8th, 2022, at 7:30 PM in Room 124 at Norfolk Town Hall, 1 Liberty Lane, Norfolk, Mass. Relative to a site plan approval application for property located at 262 Dedham Street in Norfolk, Mass. The applicant Norfolk Dedham Street LLC of Norfolk, Mass is proposing to demolish the existing buildings and construct a new building consisting of a commercial shooting range, gun shop, membership lounge, and training facility with associated parking, utility connections, and stormwater management systems. The applicant is also requesting a stormwater management permit and a special permit to allow parking in the front yard. The property is located in the C1, C1B zoning districts, reference assessors NAP 18, Block 69, Lots 18 and 43. The application and plans are available for public inspection on the town of Norfolk website or in the office of the Norfolk Planning Board during the hours of 9:00 AM to 6:00 PM, Monday through Thursday.
Thank you, Chris.
So if I just go a quick overview before opening up?
Yep.
So the, okay, thank you. So the application was received by the Planning Board Office. The project was referred out to the Design Review Board, and they met and, and provided some comments, which we have those, I believe it was February 1st, the day of their meeting. There's been a couple of back and forth meetings already between Beta Group, the project team, and the owners, as well as last week, we had a, a meeting with the same team, property owner and some of the department has talked through some of the issues, you know, things to identify and address through the whole permitting process. I do believe you were, received comments from the Board of Health in terms of how the lead gets handled from an environmental standpoint, so they'll, they'll touch on that. From the review between department heads, they haven't applied for, but one of the things that will, just to make you aware of, and they'll get into this a little bit further, is that they're going to need to apply for a PMLD in order to increase the impervious coverage. And I think as you, as they go through the project with you, you'll better understand the, the challenges of the site, but also the program for the site in terms of the project and why they really need to do in terms of increase the impervious area, provide parking for which is on a paved surface, not, you know, a non-paved surface. And that's one of the drivers in terms of the percent coverage. And then they, they will be putting together an application to, for a special permit for the freestanding sign as well. So I want to, just wanted to give that general background. Rich?
Yep.
Want me to give you the control, the sharing the screen and go through it?
Yeah, that would be, that would be a, a good start. I, I can present the site plan and we'll.
Okay.
Um, we'll start with that.
All right, so you should have control now.
Yep. Uh, good evening, members of the board. Rich Riccio from Field Engineering on behalf of the applicants. As Mr. McCarthy has stated, we're looking at the redevelopment of 262 Dedham Street in the town of Norfolk. This is the location, existing commercial lot located next to the Eagle Brook Saloon at the corner of Dedham Street and Shire Drive. The proposed project consists of the construction of approximately a 27,000 square foot footprint building, as shown here, with two, two stories, for a total floor area of approximately 44,000 square feet. Do have the architects on board, is on, on the plan, excuse me, on the call as well. Can go into a little bit of detail on the, the, the program within the building. Access to the site will continue through the curb cut off of Dedham Street. We're also proposing a second curb cut off of Shire Drive, as shown on the plan here. Based on the, the uses within the building, we have determined a parking need of 102 parking spaces on the site. We're proposing 107 spaces, which would include five handicap spaces as required by the Mass AB requirements. So we're at the, we're at the BA minimum of what we feel we need comfort wise for the number of spaces on the site, and also what the zoning would require. As Rich, Mr. McCarthy mentioned, we are requesting a special permit to allow the parking to be proposed within the front areas of the bill, of the lot. A few reasons driving that, the existing topography, the highest part of the lot is in the back, the back corner, it flows towards Dedham Street, and that, that was can, helped out with the, the design of the stormwater management facilities, which I'll get into in a second. But the, the, the main driving force behind that also was the, the existence of a lot of ledge, outcrop and ledge within the back half of this property, which will allow, will actually be building a second story partially on top of the ledge to make use of the existing grades on site more efficiently than bringing in more fill and, and keeping the building in the front of, in the front of the parcel. The, it's, the proposed site will tie into the existing utilities along Shire Drive, water, electric communications. We are proposing a, a new septic system for the, for the facility. We did go before the Board of Health and received approval on the, on this, the septic design and the design flow that we determined for the, for the proposed use within the building last month. The stormwater management facilities for the site will be a number of subsurface recharge systems located under the parking areas, as, that will handle all the impervious surface on the site, including the roof runoff. Those will be equipped with what they call an isolator row, which will serve for, for TSS removal of the storm from the runoff prior to recharging into the ground. And then in the larger storm events, the recharge facilities will overtopp towards an existing field drain located where my cursor is now, in this stone area, which is where the, the site basically drains to now. We are significantly reducing the rate and volume of runoff that's flowing both to that field grate, as well as flowing through the Shire Drive drainage system. Which also discharges in the general area that that field grate does. There's a wetland system across Shire Drive, where those two independent stormwater systems discharge. We are proposing significant landscaping improvements on the site. This plan here differs slightly from what was submitted. This, we've updated our layout and landscaping based on discussions with the Design Review Board. This, this plan here shows approximately 38 trees being planted to offset the parking. Where by zoning, we're required to plant 14 trees, and we also have a significant number of shrubs to basically plant a hedgerow across the frontage of the lot to, to, to beautify the view of the, of the site from the street, so you're not looking basically at a parking lot, yet you'll still be able to see the, the building behind, behind the, the hedges. To, you know, to, just as exemplify the, 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 the building itself. We did receive the comment letter from Beta. We had one meeting with them, with, with Mr. McCarthy to go through the comments. We're still in the process of addressing those comments and anticipate, following this meeting, submitting a revised set of plans with a comprehensive response to comments, incorporating any additional comments we see from the board tonight, as well as the Design Review Board comments and addressing the concerns from Beta. I think at this point, it may be good if we can give Dexter control of the screen. He can briefly show somewhat detail on the building itself and the, and the, and the, the program, development program within the building.
Yep, sure.
Wow, Rich is doing that. Good evening, board. My name is Dexter Preston. I'm the project architect with the IPDA, working with the DayCon team. Thank you, Rich, for running through all that. I'm going to show you a few images once I, I want to share here. I'm joined with, by Daryl Carter, President of PDA, as well as Sean Crowley, the property owner, and I think Joseph Crowley is also online today, so we're all very interested in coming before the board today and proposing this project to the team. Yeah, there we go. Okay, great. I think you can all see my screen now. I want to begin by just giving everyone an understanding of the aerial photograph. This is Route 1A here, Dedham Street. This is the existing site with the existing retail space along here and the back lot space. This is, the adjacent neighbors are the, whether the saloon next door, the Eagle Brook Saloon next door, as well as the wholesale liquor store. And then we have the existing property up behind as well. This is the gray chains that you saw that Rich was referring to. This is a ledge condition that backs part of the site. These are the two lots. We are proposing to obviously remove these buildings and reconstruct the site as a massing looks like from existing to new. We roughly have a building situated to the back of the site where we've masked the building in order to capitalize on that ledge profile that Rich was referring to and allow some allow some of the ledge conditions to be economized for the building program. We have also allows us to use some of the store bottom arrangements and Rich will get more into that. Allows some of the grading conditions to happen in the front. The overall color up that you just saw here is the site plan that references that image. I'm gonna bring through some renderings that you saw here. This is the overall building massing. Now we focused on the architectural farmhouse style to kind of have a comfortable and familiar look to the the building massing while breaking up into the barn and farmhouse style in order to break up the program of the building. We know that's something that can be really is represented represented long one A already. While it is broken up with the current light resident, light residential as well as the like commercial and industrial. So we wanted to capture kind of that more familiar residential look to improve the the appearance along the road. Some of the other things we have along here is you mentioned, Rick mentioned the hedgerows, some of the concerns that design board had was really going to be focusing on the parking along the front. So we wanted to bring some renderings of what it looked like with the revised conditions. So here's one rendering of kind of looking from one A up Shire. And then we have another rendering. It looks kind of down one A showing what the existing curb cut will look like with the renovated area. Some of the elevations of the actual architecture. Bring those up as well if you have not seen those. We wanted to have the mass of knowing there's a shooting range and it was a large volume of space. So we want to make sure that the the really interesting program elements of the members lounge, the retail, the administration and the classroom training spaces were really the focus that you see from the street. So we able to utilize the existing profile of the site, as you can see in the lower one here, to really kind of tuck the range in and then reduce its overall impact on the on the site visually. It will allow some of the more interesting features of the of the architecture to stand out.
Are we to understand that the bottom part of that of that rear building there is really ledge and and not not a building? Is that correct?
Where you This is yes.
Okay. I got you. All right. Thank you.
And to bring up the actual architectural plans to really kind of express that a little more succinctly. This is the some of the aerials renderings we have on the first floor. You can start to see where we have. This is the where we're building into the side of the ledge here. This space all along here is actually underneath the ranges. So we're utilizing that profile to actually kind of tuck away all the mechanical spaces, storage, stock, receiving spaces, as well as some of the other building support spaces and allow the main space here of the retail space to kind of be that main mass that you see from the Shire Drive entrance. We also wanted to have the members lounge with its outdoor patio space be the kind of the the corner feature that has the porch and the outdoor patio space to really become that focal point. The barn, which is that other mass that you you saw before as the kind of faux bond door is where we have the classroom settings as well as kind of an arcade and and members lounge features or parlor. The upstairs is actually where we have the ranges. Within the upstairs, we allow all of the twenty-five shooting ranges to be into the back of the site. And then we have the kind of the catwalk mezzanine space that encircles the retail below where it becomes the range lobby and range lounge areas where we have the control point right at the top of the stair. And then we have over top of the members lounge, we have all the administration spaces. The tack house, as we call it, is actually a law enforcement training simulator where they actually have breakdown partitions in order to do different training exercises of search and enters sweeping room clearing of those kind of those kind of things. That's the two main floors of the project. The massing of the roof is obviously a standing seat metal roof in order to kind of appear to that farmhouse style while we let the ranges have their flat roof with a T P O white roof membrane. Back into the architecture. Really, the overall style is we want looking to create a comfortable welcoming environment for the the fire, the use and education of firearms rather than some of the more traditional approaches that you might see for a gun range facility. We really wanted to break those stereotypes and make it much more welcoming, inviting and more stay of the yard as well. So we're really excited to be able to propose this project to the board tonight. And we're looking forward to any questions you may have.
One question I have not necessarily related to this architecture, but to the different question, how did, what was driving the the number of parking spaces at a hundred and seven? It seems pretty high and there must be some rationale behind that.
There was, there was.
You you want to go over that Dexter? Yeah. I can.
If you'd like to, Rich.
Yeah. So basically, we 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 broke down the building into different usable spaces, whether it was the retail areas, which also included some of the lounge areas, the office space for the for the for their corporate offices as well as the the classroom training on the first floor, which is a conventional classroom type with seats and number of seats. And then the training facility on the second floor, which is a little more of a non-traditional training area. And then finally, the shooting ranges. The retail, the office, the storage, that type of stuff is is crystal clear in the zoning. You know, it's per square footage usable space. And that's that's where we came up with the numbers for those areas. The shooting range, we basically assigned one space per lane, assuming all twenty-five space lanes would be taken at one time. The number of seats in the training room is one space per three seats, which is generally used for that type of setting, that type of occupancy. So that drove us to the hundred and two number spaces required. When you're between a hundred and a hundred and twenty-five or a hundred and fifty, you also need five handicap spaces, which aren't included in the required count, but did bring us up to a hundred and seven provided spaces. And based on a number of discussions with the owners and the the you know, developing this project, they feel you know, confident that they're gonna need every one of these spaces.
Okay, thank you. Another question I have is you mentioned retail. What is it you're proposing to sell?
This would be accessories and and guns and it's a typical gunshot on in a in a more high end setting than going to Walmart and buying a gun or a Dixon buying a gun. Maybe Dexter or even Sean might be able to talk quickly about that as well.
Yeah, I'd be glad to. Yeah, it's a retail environment for firearms, accessories, ammunition, clothing. There's a lot of different things we're going to be able to sell in the retail environment.
As well as having a workshop for the installation and of accessories as well.
I I'm not familiar with what requirements are in front of you to qualify for firearm sales, but there must be some that are beyond the purview of the planning board. Perhaps it's the police department. I'm not sure, but can you explain to us what hurdles you must jump in order to be able to sell firearms?
Yes, sir. We need a federal firearms license that we need to obtain to the A T F, and we also need a Massachusetts state firearms license.
But not the local one.
Correct, sir.
Okay, thank you. Understood. Got questions from board members here?
Yes, it seems like this is a very well branded project. Do you have an existing location already that you're operating out of?
Chris, we don't know. We were operating a power equipment business at the current location and you know, through the last couple of years, the 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 opposite side of the property has been vacant. We haven't been able to get a retail customer to to rent that space. And that's part of what drove this decision is, you know, it's such a tough retail environment to get a tenant in that space and it's it just really drove us to find a different business that we wanted to get involved with and it's a new and exciting business and this is our first venture into it.
On that point, what kind of market analysis have you done from a feasibility perspective to understand the appetite for something like this in this location?
Yeah, we've done extensive market research. We reached out to company called Next Gen Range Analysis and we did, you know, really, really intricate market studies. There's a lot of data that that shows, you know, the appetite for this type of, but just to give you an idea in a twenty-five mile radius, there are eight hundred thousand gun owners in this area. You know, if you look at at just Bass Pro down the street, if you go to Bass Pro on a Saturday, you know, it's hard to come by a parking spot and you you can see the enthusiasm in the area. There's two indoor gun ranges in the general area of us. One is in Holliston and one is in North Attleboro. And if you try to, you know, rent a lane at either one of those places on a weekend, you're you're waiting in line for hours. I mean, they're they're really tough to get into. That being said, I mean, that's where the comparison kind of ends when you 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 compare those to what we're building. This is world-class, state-of-the-art facility. It's got target retrieval equipment that that people haven't even seen before. It's 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 really going to be something else. And we really designed this to to bring in a whole different venue, a different group of people that are going to be new to this sport, people that are, you know, for the first time considering buying a firearm. And we really wanted to create a an environment that that took the anxiety and took the apprehension away for that that first time shooter, for that female shooter, for for people that are, you know, looking to get into this sport for the first time. So it's a it's gonna be a world-class destination. And I think people from from all over the Northeast are are gonna come to Norfolk to to come to our facility.
Not no, my last question is around the arcade that you had listed there. Understanding it's obviously members members only, not necessarily an arcade for children, is that, you know, the firearm kind of training arcade with the the laser ballistics?
That's that's something that we could involve. We've really haven't gotten specific into that particular space. It it's something that that's just a little bit more to the the members lounge area. It's just a place to relax and unwind in which the 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 range is a similar feature. It's a place to to really relax and unwind and it's an alternate space that that we're going to be able to grow into as we go. And I don't know if it will be specific related to firearms arcades or simulators of that nature, but but that's an option going forward for us.
One of the reasons for it was that we wanted to make sure there was an opportunity to have a game, a more of a games and, you know, the acoustic separation between the two different members spaces. That was one of the drivers to call it the arcade slash parlor.
Makes sense. And then just in the vein of this, I'm assuming there's gonna be some sort of competitions that would invite others into the the area to, you know, showcase their skills as well.
Oh, absolutely. I mean, all the different competitive shooting groups, we hope to to host events, you know, year round and for for every different group that would like to participate.
And then lastly, I'm sure you're aware of the tragedies that have happened at the North Attleboro location and you put in mitigations as well.
Absolutely. That's something very conscious of and, you know, something we'll be paying close attention to with you know, how how we rent our guns and and how we rent our lanes to to customers.
Thank you.
Other board members have questions or comments?
Yeah, I'm sorry. Is that you, John? Jack?
Go go ahead, John. I'll ask mine after you.
Just for the neighbors. You can hear no shooting going down the street from the ranges, correct? You can't hear the gunfire.
No, sir.
I actually did the accounting and tax work for the place in Holliston owned by Steve Hathaway. This here is substantially an upgraded setup. This is actually one of the best plans I've seen since being on the planning board. And what was kind of amazing to me is I I did their work for four or five years. The clientele they had, number one, was a majority of women. And I was astonished at the number of people taking classes and using the facility. And I at that particular place, the restrictions were so tight that not much could go wrong as far as I could see. Actually, the first time I ever shot a gun was down in that range. So I see this thing and I was always wondering why we never had one in this area because the demand was so substantial down there. But what are the safety features that you build into this building just as far as enter and egress that you're required or you you do just through your own purpose for safety reasons?
Are we talking about security features to enter and exit?
Yes.
Yes, I would think, you know, probably roll up doors at the the very minimum on the glass door to to enter and exit the facility. The 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 windows that are going to be on the retail area are a fiberglass material that are they're way more difficult than than glass to break. So it's I think Dexter might be able to speak a little bit more on the specific materials.
It was. Yeah. So one of the interesting part, obviously, with you want something that's durable, but also we wanted something that was translucent, but not necessarily transparent. So one of the driving features was to have the central trim. We have some, you know, visual glazing, but also have the recipe. We are probably, you're probably might be familiar with Cowall. It's a, you know, there's other translucent panels out there, but that's a product that some people know. It's kind of that white translucent material you see on a lot of different gymnasiums, athletic facilities. It has a very high good thermal values as well as a high early resistance to damage and and impact. So that's one of the features that we wanted to bring into that facade to have have a glow, but also be not transparent.
And last question I have is what your operating hours gonna be?
At the moment, the the initial plan for it is ten A M. to nine P M. Monday through Saturday and through Sunday, excuse me.
All right, thank you.
All right, I had a this chat pack. I had a couple of questions. If you can go back to the site plan. So what is the proposed gravel drive there at the top that goes from the parking lot to the back? Yeah, what's that?
So one of the items that we wanted to have, we realized that with the front of the house, front of the house being so, you know, scaled to the pedestrian, we wanted to be able to have the mechanical access really. While it needed to be here for utilities, we want to be able to have things brought in necessarily also from the backside of need be for the mechanical room. So in the site, in the actual floor plan, the main mechanical room is actually to the back.
Gotcha.
And any made any large scale items that need to be brought in if there was a display or things like that of that nature, rather than coming in through the front door, maybe it'll be brought down that gravel road and straight into the red, straight into the retail area.
Okay, that makes sense. Thank you. Two more questions. One is so in the winter, you got to store the snow somewhere. I mean, what what's the plan to to deal with that?
Chad, it's something near and dear to my heart. Seventeen years of owning this property, I I know every every square inch of it. And when we designed the layout, it was something that we put a lot of time and thought into. We're gonna, you know, we have a skid steer with multiple attachments on it. We have a bucket. We have a plow. We're also gonna get a snowball or attachment. So we're really gonna be able to pinpoint where we put that material and how we've designed it, the island, so that there's no bump outs within them. So we'll be able to plow straight down, push the material to the back and the sides of the property. So it's it's something that I've put a lot of thought into.
Okay, sounds good. Last question is the so I see there's a there's an existing sidewalk on Shire Drive, but there's nothing on one A. And I looked on 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 Google Maps and I'm just trying to recall. I mean, I drove by there just yesterday. And I don't think there's any sidewalk on one A. But we need to start adding sidewalks on one A. So I I'm not sure if that was something that Beta put in there. And I'm not sure if that's a very waiver you were looking for was to get a waiver on the sidewalk, but you know, it it would be required to put something in or make a a contribution to the sidewalk fund for that portion that's on one A.
So we did talk about that, Chad and other members of the board at the meeting last week. So the sidewalk, the sidewalk that is on 1A, the furthest or closest point to this is is down at two I'm trying to think. So right next to towards Walpole. So the gas station is, you know, where the convenience store is.
Yep.
The next property to that one to the right.
Okay.
Which, so that sidewalk was installed as part of the development.
That's right.
The next property to the right of that, which Mr. Gentile was before the board just recently for approval, he'll be putting a sidewalk there. So that's that's the furthest or the closest sidewalk to this location so far. So
Okay.
But we did discuss either installation with sidewalk or a payment, you know, in terms of into the sidewalk fund. Because there's a requirement, as you know, though within the regulations, so.
Okay, thank you for the clarification.
A question on that, if if we would choose to put the, you know, the the pavement, the 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 payment into the fund, do we request a waiver for the sidewalk as a formal waiver? And or is that a in lieu of a waiver, put put the fund into the fund? I just want to know for the next iteration of the plans, I'll list that as a you know, an official waiver on the on the list of waivers?
So I will double check, but I would, um, my recollection is that it was a waiver, but it was a waiver with a contribution to the sidewalk.
Okay. That makes sense. I just wanted to clarify so we don't miss anything as we're moving forward here.
Yep. Okay. So in terms of just the big picture, I want to do the big picture where they're at. So this is the first presentation. And as you know, and I discussed this with the applicant, you know, we have our chairman who's not going to run, he's retiring after many years. And we also have Gary Searl, who's retiring after quite a few years, not as many as a chair. Several years, not as many as a chair. So under the site plan approval end of this, they'll need four votes. Because it's not a special permit, Gary Sullivan, who would sit as a you know, as as he sits in terms of special permit, he wouldn't be able to vote. So just in terms of, you know, timeframe, we discussed there's a meeting in April, maybe there might need to be another meeting. I just want to let everybody know with the board and so forth that where we're at. Otherwise, it would have to go through a you know, withdraw and then re-advertising to get the new members. Well, at the moment, it's just Gary Sullivan that's running, but to be able to sit on the site plan and that.
Well, if Gary runs as he is and is elected, then you've got your four votes, right?
Yeah, we do. But it would have to, they'd have to, you know, basically withdraw and we'd have to re-advertise it to get him in because he wouldn't wouldn't be able to sit on this right. He can't sit on it right now. And that would be after the election. His status would change. I will double check with town council to to make sure. I just want to put it out there now. My
Yeah, I think, yeah, that's a good point. After all, he has sat through this presentation and understands the issues and and perhaps the town council would agree that he would qualify.
Yeah, so I I will double check, but I just want to
Yep.
Make everyone aware of that.
Also, I think it's a state law that an associate member can only vote on special permits and not on site plans. And site plans are also a super majority. So that's the issue.
Okay, all right, John, I'll I'll take your word for it.
Yeah, John did a better job. So he's he's right. I think, you know, you kind of it it acts and walks like a duck, but it's not quite a duck to site plan approval process here. And I just want to confirm that's the case. Just to be sure.
Okay, yep. In terms of the sidewalk, I'd love to see the you you fellows put it in. I mean, granted, it wouldn't connect up to the Eagle Brook because they don't have one, but who knows down the road, they might develop that property and put a sidewalk in and we'd have the beginning of continuity all the way down to to Pond Street. So just think about that. I know you could make a contribution to fund in lieu of but it might be less expensive to put the sidewalk in.
I second that, Walter. I'd like to see a sidewalk as well.
Well, they they can study it and decide what they want to do.
Exactly. Yep.
So this is the point where if there aren't any other questions from the board and so forth, I do see a couple of hands raised.
Okay.
So.
All right, anyone in the audience care to raise a comment or a question, please?
So I do think Donna Jones was before Aaron.
Okay.
Donna Jones, North Street. Just an observation on the posting of this topic. It didn't mention the proposed use. Some other people may have tuned in if they had known of the use. I know one particular female gun user that might be interested in this project. And I'm also a customer of Sean's at Crowley Power Equipment, and I'm wondering if that service will still be available.
Donna, unfortunately, when we tear the building down, that will be the end of Crowley's Power Equipment, but we
Sorry to hear that.
Thanks for your support.
Thank you.
So
Aaron?
Yeah, Aaron. And well, actually, you know what? I think Kate Kate's iPad was technically next, to be honest.
Whatever. Go ahead.
Can you well, hopefully they're taking themselves off and mute? No. Right, let me see.
Kate put her hand down, Rich.
Put her hand up. All right. Well, and Aaron's, Aaron's next. Go ahead, Aaron.
Good evening, Board. Aaron Hunt, 266 Main Street. Also a member of the plan, sorry, the Design Review Board. I just wanted to make sure the board received the letter from the Design Review Board. I didn't hear it mentioned. Maybe I missed it.
Uh, no, we got it. And what I heard was they're going to take that and also the beta comments and come back with a response shortly. So they they will take into consideration those points that was raised, were raised in that letter that you sent.
Thanks, Walter. So just a quick follow up on that, you know, when I am touched on tonight was the parking. We did also express some concern with a number of parking spaces and the fact that a majority of them are located in front of the building in the front yard. And we talked about a number of potential mitigation items for that, especially since it's a special permit. I don't, one that didn't make it in the letter, I'm not sure if we mentioned it or not, but I think one that's worth pursuing, especially in this location because of the ledge and the permeability would be not asphalting the entire lot, but perhaps putting in some permeable pavers or something in some locations. Just
You know, what what is the, what is the lot coverage? Do we know what the lot coverage is? It's pretty, pretty large, obviously.
Yeah, we're we're right at, we're at 65.
Okay.
On this plan here.
Yep.
Yeah, Walter, I agree with you. I mean, just looking at it, it looks like we're more than 65. Sure, Beta will do the math.
Yeah, Beta will do the math, right.
That's what we, we want to make sure we did the hard math on it as well.
Yeah.
Any thoughts? Thanks for letting me share. Get you later.
Okay, okay, Aaron. Thanks. Anyone else? Well, and if not, then the chair will entertain a motion to continue the public hearing until our April 12th meeting at 7:15 p.m.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Who? Another member of our board, I guess. All right, so let's see. Mr. Peck.
Aye.
Mr. Weddleton. I can't hear you.
Aye.
Okay, very good. Thank you. Mr. Searl.
Aye.
Mr. Monford.
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Thank you. All right, anything else on that topic? And before we move on?
No, I think we've covered that. Thank you, everyone.
Okay, next item on the agenda is 46 Fruit Street Scenic Road Tree Hearing for removal of a portion of stone wall, the town right of way for the installation of a driveway to serve a new home. Chair is going to recuse himself from this item since I am a trustee of the property at 50th Fruit Street that was engaged in the sale of the 46 lot. So Chad, you can conduct the business on this item.
Okay.
Thank you all.
You know, go ahead and read the notice. Notice is hereby given that the Planning Board and Tree Warden will hold a consolidated public hearing under the provisions of Mass. General Laws 40, Section 15 dash C, Scenic Roads Act in Chapter 87, Section 3, and Room 124 at the Norfolk Town Hall on Tuesday, March 8, 2022, at 7:45 p.m. To consider the application of Mill Street Preserve LP for the removal of a portion of a stone wall within the street right of way to allow for the construction of a driveway to serve a new home at 46 Fruit Street. Reference assessors map 16, block 55, lot 127. Information pertaining to the stone wall and the location, subject of this application is available for public inspection at the Planning Board Office in Town Hall during the hours of 9 a.m. to 6 p.m. Monday through Thursday.
Thank you, Chris. Rich, you want to give us an overview?
Well, you know what? In this case, I'm going to punt to the tree tree warden. Since he's, I see him over there.
Perfect.
Yeah.
So on this this particular property, Mr. Lynch and I did go out and walk the and walk the frontage along the road. There is a small remnants or what's left of a small stone wall along the roadway there. There is a telephone pole, a utility pole right at the corner of the lot, which I don't think will impede what he has planned and shouldn't be any issues with any trees there. So it's pretty straightforward.
Okay. I I'll be honest, this is the first time that I've been on the planning board where we've had this come up. So I'm not, I'll be not sure what questions to ask or what's involved in this. I mean, so what is involved when someone makes a request like this to remove a stone wall?
Yes, so every road in town is a scene is considered to be a scenic road. Not every, not every town is like that, but Norfolk it is. So in this particular case, because there is no other way around it, he has to put in the request and and here we are.
Okay, and so it it the drawing I have in front of me shows like a 20-foot removal. So is is that the request and and they can remove no more than that?
Yeah, the discussion that Mr. Lynch and I, and certainly Mr. Lynch is here and can speak as well, but the discussion that we had was that we would remove what needed to be removed for the driveway and and leave the remaining stone wall intact. So it would, it would certainly be a minimal construction right there.
Okay. I don't have any further questions. Does do any of the board members have any other questions? Let's see, Gary.
There's a mention around the the specific tree. I'm looking at the picture that we were provided. Can we just take a look at that and point out which tree we're talking about? And then show the insignificance of the stone wall as well for everyone's benefit.
Yeah, I can I'll just share the plan and then hold on.
If you zoom right down to it, you can see from the the northwest property corner. You can get a pretty good
So I get down there close enough, you want me to zoom in a little more?
Yeah, go one more. I think you'll see it a little better. See it right underneath a dark line along the right of way of the road. So that it comes from the the northeast down along perpendicular to the road and then turns down the edge of the right of way and goes in a southeasterly direction. So the proposal would be to remove about 20 feet from the property corner down 20 feet to for to allow for the installation of the driveway. The rest of it would remain intact.
Okay.
And and Rich, we were also provided a photograph as well.
So that's the power pole that you were talking about.
Correct.
Yeah. And so that or it looks like there's some orange color on that rock. Is that like the first rock that would be removed and then
Correct. The power, yes, the power pole, Chad, would stay in place. So the driveway would be to the right of the power pole for a 20-foot section.
Okay.
And the remainder of that dividing wall on the left that kind of goes off into the distance, that remains as well.
Correct.
So the the tree that's in question is that the larger one behind there's rocks right there, the little pebble that which is messes up.
To the right, there's one tree that's right on the, that's just this side. Yes, yeah, just to this side of the stone wall there. Technically, that would be within the right of way.
Okay.
That's the one in question.
Yes.
And then the property owners and the right to remove the remaining.
Yes.
All right. Any other questions from the board?
Just keep straight forward.
I see none. So are there any questions from the community that are on the call? I see nothing.
See no I'm not seeing it.
Yep. So
So you have a motion to close the hearing and then we can draft, I know Betsy started draft decision, but we can finish it up and then have the board sign it.
Yep. So we need a motion to close the public hearing in 46 Fruit Street Scenic Road Tree Hearing.
So moved.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and seconded. So do roll call votes. Chris Monford.
Aye.
Gary Searl.
Aye.
John Weddleton.
Aye.
And the vice chair votes aye. Gary Sullivan, what's your opinion?
My opinion is aye.
Thank you.
Excellent. All right. So that
So the public hearing is closed. So what else do you need, Rich, from us?
Nothing. Tonight, we'll just draft the decision for the board's signature.
Okay, thank you.
All right, thank you, Chad.
Thank you.
All right, thank you, John. Thank you, Blair.
There's, there's one person on the call who has some some wonderful but noisy kids in the background. I would appreciate it if that individual could mute themselves at least until I need to speak.
That's one of your planning board members.
Ah, okay. All right. Okay, the next item on our agenda is Fire Station Project Update. Rich, are you speaking to that or do we have someone from the
No, you No, you, you have you have representatives from the.
From the committee, huh?
From the architect, yeah, well, from the architectural firm and there are some members from the committee online.
Very good. Okay, so whoever wishes to speak may do so.
Hey, Ron, I'll, I'll just kind of speak real quick. Kevin Champagne to Seneca Street. And the chair of the Fire Station Building Committee, we have a few members of our committee here tonight, as well as members of the architecture firm Doran Whittier. And our O P M. Vertex, as well as the town administrator is part of the committee. So we thank you for, for listening to our, to our update tonight. I know Ron of Doran Whittier submitted the special permit application, which we're hoping to review with you tonight. Obviously, we think this is a pretty important step and an important project to everyone in town. So we, we welcome your feedback. I'm here as well as other members of the committee and Doran Whittier to answer any questions you might have. So. Ron. Let you take it away.
Okay, thanks. I guess the easiest thing for me to do is just share the, share my screen. And kind of walk you through. And if the host could just let me do that. All right, perfect. Thank you. So if you all can see my screen, we have the. Let's see, so this is the plan that we're focusing on. This is the, the new fire station layout here. So two things is taking place. The first thing was last time we met. We talked about the, the green belt that wraps around the site. So our landscape architect and civil engineer have worked with us to put together a diagram that shows what we would need to comply with the green belt requirement. As you can see, these solid circles around here, those are considered existing trees. And we did the best we could to represent what's actually there. And then the circles that, you know, kind of look like squiggly lines are the proposed trees. And the proposed trees would be six feet tall on the day they planted. And right now we are recommending an evergreen. So that they don't lose their leaves during the seasons. So a couple of things have come up. One is on the south side, south being bottom of the page. You can see that there's a good amount of existing trees. And then in the southeast corner, there's also a good amount of existing trees. So the question is, do we need to plant anything along the south edge? For instance, there's also a septic field that we, you know, that was installed by the town. Septic field is existing and feeds the existing fire station and will remain in place for the new fire station. And we just, we can't build anything on top of that. So that was the first item we wanted to discuss tonight. And we'd like to hear your thoughts on that.
There's a, another complication in that particular corner. Which I'm sure you're aware of because we've spoken of it before, and that's the down the road possibility of locating a waste treatment facility in that corner. How does that, how have you taken that into consideration when you looked at this plan?
Right, so the last time we spoke to the design team on that. They were actually thinking about doing something along this line. Or along these lines, I should say. Because this is our fifty-foot setback. Is, this is a thirty-foot green belt. The fifty-foot setback is pretty much on that line right there. So even in the corner. You know, we're looking at whatever they build above grade would be in that fifty-foot setback. So most of their items will be underground.
Yep.
So I suspect that's gonna have to come in front of the board. They do have the pumping station that sticks up above ground. We also believe, and we haven't done any test pits or borings in this area. But based on the topography and where we have found ledge on the site. We do believe that there's a lot of ledge back here. And for that reason, the last time we reviewed it with, with the group doing the sewer, they said, you know, it doesn't necessarily have to go exactly right there. So they're thinking of possibly some other places.
Okay, thank you. Now, back to the point that you raised a moment ago about the trees. Questions from the board?
Not really a question. It's just a matter of, I mean, the septic field's there. It's in that buffer zone and you can't plant on it. So I don't think there's a whole lot we could do there. It just, that's just the way it is.
Yep.
But I do have a question regarding the plantings in the lower right part of the picture in that corner. Isn't that, no, I'm sorry, the lower left? Isn't, wasn't that where, wasn't that all blasted out? Previously, isn't that a lot of ledge?
It is. And so one of the concepts there is to actually build up the grades. So in other words, we would go in, dig down as far as we could in terms of a test pit, if you will. And then we'd have to essentially build a planting bed, you know?
That's, that was my point. Okay.
Yeah.
Answer my question.
Okay. But of course, that leads to the second topic of discussion tonight. So if we're if we're done with the first. And, you know, the idea here is we would like to avoid really just leaving this the natural state that it's already in. Because even though we're showing these trees right now, the landscape architect has warned us that digging up this area to plant these trees, to your point about planting beds, could disrupt the roots of the existing trees that are there. So I think what they were, wanted to show is, you know, what it would take to sort of infill this. Before we went ahead and asked for relief of getting this, we thought it was important to show you how dense that would get and how intrusive it might be with the existing trees.
Yeah, it is a very dense proposal and trees, albeit they are six feet when planted, they, they don't stay that way. They grow and they grow up and out as well and wouldn't be very much very many years before it would be a real thicket there, right? I mean, some of them would perhaps, perhaps kill off others because they all fight for the sun. Seems pretty dense at any rate.
Isn't there also somewhat of a hill on the backside of the fire department?
It is uphill, yes.
And the property behind there to this, to the bottom of the drawing, there's no, no, nothing there. Is that right? It's, it's a.
There's a house back here. Probably where my curse is going back and forth.
Okay.
You can, and it's interesting, you cannot see the house during the summertime. So we just by happenstance had an opportunity to take some photos there when we started the project in late summer, early fall. And we've got some photos that basically show that you can't see the house. However, during the winter, when all these leaves drop off these trees. You can make out the house behind all the woods.
And that's on, on North Street, right? The one fifteen?
Uh, yeah, North Street, yeah.
Yeah. Okay.
So Ron, if you just just zoom out a little bit. So in terms of in terms of the, the common property line between the Federated Church and the Fire Station. In the top of the screen. That, that location there is an easement, which is encumbered on the town's property that was part of the original purchase from the Federated Church. So what we, we talked about today was you know, you have the zoning bylaw requirements which don't contemplate what somebody's done necessarily or hasn't done on their property. So in order to, you have to meet that zoning bylaw requirement. And in this particular instance. There isn't, in terms of the vehicle, it would have to be a variance because you're that or you have to plant it. Now, in terms of the easement, you have conflicting things. You have an easement that you need to keep. Because that was something that was put in place and negotiated as part of the purchase years ago. In fact, actually, part of that was wooded years ago as well. But the zoning, the zoning is the one piece of it. So their relief. There was a discussion about in terms of consideration modifying the zoning district boundary. They've got a project timeline they're trying to stick to, which wouldn't mesh with trying to seek, you know, a change in the zoning bylaw. So their discussions today was to amend or actually add to their special permit. Request to the zoning board of appeals to reduce that buffer, which is, it was fifty feet down to the thirty. Was to seek a variance for that section that's closer to Main Street. What's shown on that plan there. Having said that and listening to some of the discussion. Since you're already going and they're gonna be going before the zoning board of appeals. They may want to you know, at least extend that down. You know, to a portion of that where the fire station proposed new location is to perhaps not plant it. And if they get the relief to get the relief, if they don't get it, then they're gonna have to build up that planting bed to make it work. And it's something that at least the committee and the architect and staff involved with the project, just thinking about it. Might want to give consideration to think about.
Okay, so Rich, I think that there, there's really kind of like two parts, right? Like you and you and I spoke about today, which is the variance for the easement. Which I think is a little bit more complicated. So I was kind of gonna hold, you know, we can discuss that in a minute, but I think, Rich, what you're suggesting now is that when we go for this variance. And I do have the amended application here. So, you know, we can review that later. The, when we go for this variance, everybody on the board, on the planning board should know that the planning board, according to the bylaw, has the jurisdiction over the green belt. But as Rich pointed out, we're actually not asking for a relief of reducing the green belt. We're asking to eliminate it in its entirety and in the area of the easement. So just as a bit of clarification, when the town bought the property in two thousand nine, or at least that's when the deed was recorded, was two thousand nine. There's a utility and access easement that belongs to the church. So this area right here. By purchase of the property, you can't build anything in there. And the legal terms of the deed essentially say that this has to remain encumbered by the church for use as a drainage area and access area. So with that, we are gonna be able to show a hardship to the planning, to the zoning board to say, you know, if we plant here, we're breaking the law. And so that's the hardship. And I think, you know, when that was spelled out today. I think, Rich, what you're saying is since we are going for a variance to not plant here, based on the legal aspect of the deed. Can we extend that down to here? And just ask for a variance for all of this?
You can, Rich?
Yep.
It's a town bylaw that says you cannot put a tree in a easement area. And in my property, it's on every single deed. So just by town law, they should not be planting anything in that easement area. Again, that's, that's a fix and it's been around for a long time. So you can check and see, but I don't think they need a special permit to waive planting in the easement because I think our town bylaws say you're not allowed to put anything structural or plantings. And the second thing I know in the residential rules. When you have an existing tree that does take the place of planting another tree. And in this bottom right-hand corner here. That, that, that's just a situation set up to fail. I mean, there's just way too many trees and you're planting, are these what type of evergreens are these, Ron?
Um, we're trying to make sure that they are prestigious, so they just grow vertical.
Because you're planting them under all these existing trees and they're gonna get no sun.
Right.
So how are they, how are they gonna exist?
Exactly. So what we did to demonstrate the, because the bylaw says, you know, for ten feet apart, fifteen feet apart. So you put that two rows of grid down. That's what the landscape architect tried to do. And so you're right, it looks very dense and that's why their recommendation was, let's show it the way the bylaw reads. And then, you know, ask for relief, especially in a lot of these dense areas. So when we, we're talking almost like from here on the eastern edge down across the south. We would like to, even if it's, you know, a sidewalk that, that you'd like to join us out there. We're out there every Wednesday. You know, we could all just take a look at the density of the trees and you might say don't plant anything, right? Because it's natural. It's, the neighbor does have a fence up there right now. You know, does it make sense for us just not to plant along the east and the south side? Or does it make sense to just add a few on the east side? And then on the west side, that's where, you know, Rich thought maybe a variance would be in order. You're quoting something we can definitely look up in the bylaws about easements. And then there's this piece here, which we had spoken about a few meetings ago, which was, you know, is it possible to get a waiver there or not plant anything there? Because it is the sort of access drive for the fire station versus the parking lot for the church. So I think at the last meeting, the discussion was we need something here. And I think, Rich, correct me if I'm wrong, but Bob also chimed in and said he would, he would be expecting to see something along this western edge.
Yeah, cuz it.
Yeah.
There's no trees there.
Right. So I think, you know, when Bob reviewed it, Bob said he would be expecting to see trees along the church. And then as far as the back in the east said, you know, he's, he's acknowledged that there's a lot of existing trees there.
Well, in a, in a practice over the past few years in residential developments, we have a certain tree spacing required that we have expanded because we find that the trees grow too close together. And so we, we changed the spacing. I, I can't recall exactly the dimensions that we changed it to, but it certainly was a lot less dense than we're showing here. John, maybe you require, recall what those dimensions were.
Yeah, so, so Walter, in terms of what you're speaking to, those, those are really the, the street trees. Yeah, not really a you know, the, the purpose of them is not a screening, you know, it's, it's you know, refu, you know, providing trees and visual. Not this. It's not the same purpose as these.
Yeah, I understand, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
I have a question for you. Since the property be about around the east. Isn't the B one outer district also as the fire station? Is that, that correct?
The residential property is out, it's in the residential.
Oh, this one to, to the east of the fire station? That's residential also?
Correct.
Yes.
Okay, I thought that was in the B one, okay. Which is why you've got the green belt on both sides. Yeah.
Yes.
Yeah, so my, my only suggest, so what I'm trying to just clarify my suggestion is we we, we talked this afternoon that we know up towards Main Street, there is the easement there and there is no trees. So there is no trees. So by law, purpose this section is, hey, you need to plant it when there, there are no trees. If you have trees, then you can augment what's there, provided you create this buffer. So what I'm suggesting, and I will clarify it because they have, we gotta look at the application. Not tonight, we'll look at it internally and offline. But if you're going, you could discuss it with the Z B I. Maybe there's a, you know, there's some rash, they would accept the rationale and and, and maybe you don't need to do it to the extent that you're showing.
Okay. Well, we have to go to the Z B A because we're asking for the setback adjustment from fifty feet, which is this line.
Right.
To thirty feet, which is this line. So we're definitely going in front of the zoning board. I did redo the permit. Um, I did redo the permit application today to include both a request for variance in that area. Stipulating all of the measures, you know, that's required for that, uh, as well as the setback. So would, I guess we can just leave it like that and send it to the zoning board and, you know, even in, in that night, we could also say, you know, here's another bylaw that, that says we can't plant in there. So.
Well, well, so.
Yeah.
Yeah, I don't wanna get too deep into the weeds during this discussion, but in terms of, let's take, let's discuss it, um, a little bit more, think about it. And then make this, cause you don't wanna be mo, you can't be modifying the things on the fly. So if it doesn't make sense, that's fine. I'm just throwing it out there. If you're, you're already there. Um, and you know, effectively you're buffering a parking lot to a parking lot. So again, I understand there's a timeline, but as a practical matter, it, you know, I mean, what, what are we doing? So to speak, yeah, right?
Okay. So, no, that, that sounds good.
In the meantime, you can research the point that John Weldon raised about, uh, the existing bylaw that prevents you from planting anything in that easement area to begin with.
Yeah.
Rich, can he get, can this, can that, this committee get a, uh, a waiver from the, uh, tree planting bylaw and the green belt from the ZBA?
I.
Is that possible?
Well, they're not a, not a, they have to get a variance.
That's what I mean. Can they get a variance?
Yeah, they could.
Because all this, all of these trees here, in, in about five years, it's gonna look like a nightmare.
Yeah.
Because these, these things get twenty, thirty feet pretty quickly and they're growing into each other, gonna be coming out in the driveway area. And the whole east side in the back rear corner and along most of the back of the building, there's enough natural vegetation there. I question whether they even need extra plantings that may not survive.
Yeah.
I, I agree with the, yeah, I agree with you on the, the backside. Uh, my only concern is with the residential side. Cause i- if you notice, a lot of the circles are only really towards that concentrated area in the lower, um, east side. Um, there's a lot of gaps that are there and we saw the gaps as well in the photos that were provided a, a couple of meetings ago. So I, I just wanna make sure we maintain some sort of.
Yeah, there are gaps, right. And those are the ones where they should put the trees, but not where they're right in front of a a maple or an oak tree that's gonna just shake.
Exactly.
Yeah.
Right. And the good news is, John and other board members, that's your purview. So that, that boundary there where there's already vegetation, trees and so forth, you can, and they can request it and you can make that decision. The other side, which is the west side, that's a different situation. There, there is no existing vegetation or trees screening.
I think this is a good representation of how chaotic and busy the, the greenway buffer is. So I appreciate that. And now, and now it's, I think, you gotta take a more realistic approach, like what, what John and Chris are saying. It's like, all right, let's be realistic here and what, what really do we need and what's gonna survive long term?
If I were you, Ron, I'd come up with a realistic plan. And on the east side, I would take all the existing trees and fill in the holes and not necessarily with a pine tree that's gonna get huge, but perhaps a cypress or a hemlock or something like that, that'll fill in the space and stay green. And in the, the, uh, green belt side, if you went for a variance, I mean, realistically, they're all gonna be growing into each other in three or four years. It's gonna just be crazy. And the same way along the back, I would strategically place where you think there's proper coverage and let the planning board look at the part that we have jurisdiction on. Excuse me, and let the ZBA look at the part that they have jurisdiction on if you're going for a waiver and come up with a whole comprehensive, comprehensive planting schedule that makes sense. Cause it looks like just an appearance that half of these things at least aren't needed.
Yep.
No, we, we'd be happy to do that. Our, our landscape architect would certainly come up with something of a recommendation. Okay. Um, so the only other thing we wanted to present tonight is we have submitted an application to meet with the design review board. Um, you know, again, prior to submitting the whole, um, permit application for permitting. Um, and we wanted to, uh, just quickly go through what our exterior looks like in terms of the pitched roofs. We talked about that last time. Um, so obviously this is town hall. Um, these are some Norfolk, um, just community buildings in and around town, uh, where you see that they sort of have the, the pitched roof look to them, but they have these gable ends, right? Um, and so again, just more gable ends as we move through town, even the old fire station. I can push this thing over a little bit. Um, even the old fire station had sort of these gable ends. Um, and so what we're proposing is, um, something very similar to that. And we are trying to take on this sort of farmhouse appearance, if you will, uh, for the fire station. So this is Main Street here and this is kind of looking towards that back corner um, of the church. So the church is on the right, residential property is on the left. So this would be the front of the station. Um, this would be full-on standing on Main Street. Um, and this would be looking back towards that residential property that we just talked about on the east side. This is kind of looking um, southeast, if you will. And so this is a very early concept sketch. Obviously, there's been some feedback from the building committee. Um, positive feedback, should say, as well as the working group. Uh, but this is where we're at right now in terms of pitched roofs. Um, I believe during our all department meeting, Bob has also, uh, taken a look at this. And so, um, as we move around the back where it's not visible, uh, we do have a training roof here for the fire department and a training roof here. And then everything else that we believe you'll be able to see coming down. Um, Main Street is pitched, so this is the side um, of it. And then that's kind of a bird's eye view with the training roof here, the training roof there. Um, this is also a training roof, um, but we're gonna keep that on the slope. So they can practice, um, going up and down slope roofs, I guess. Um, this area of the fire station is where we would put future solar panels, uh, if we were able to put solar onto the building, which is a requirement under the, um, uh, the stretch code, the stretch energy code. Um, but as you can see, basically starting from this corner all the way around to that corner there, we've provided the pitched, um, roofs that we had spoken about.
Looks good.
So on that rendering, it shows the, the driveway going all the way around the building, but your plans don't show that.
Right. The plans are more up to date.
Okay, okay.
Yep. Um.
What was the reasoning to, I, I know we had talked about that at a previous meeting about having it um, the access around three sixty around the building and I forget why you weren't doing that.
Um, the reason is the ledge, right?
Okay.
So these contour lines that you see, well, you really can't, we got those spot grades in there. But you know, essentially right along that line, right along that edge is where the blasting stopped.
Okay.
Um, and so we're kind of nestling it right in there into that corner.
Um, I get you. Okay.
Yeah, okay. So that's, that's really it for tonight. I mean, the parking remains the same. Um, we have our calculation that requires, you know, using the the non-recreational floor space of public facilities, um, one space for every three hundred usable, uh, floor area, square foot. Uh, we have about seventy-five hundred square feet, which takes us to twenty-five spaces. And right now on the site plan, we have twenty-nine spaces and two handicaps, so total of thirty-one. Um, we do think and the chief would be fine if we had to lose a space, but you know, this is, we're still in process. Um, and so we may lose a parking space just due to like dumpster locations or the transformer or whatever we have to do, um, in, in this back corner here. Um, lots of stuff going on back here. So that's, you know, that's what we wanted to present tonight and, and get some.
Okay, well, thank you very much. Appreciate that update.
Okay.
And good luck at the ZBA.
Thank you.
And we look forward to your, your new planning proposal.
Yes, yep. All right.
Okay, before we move on, anyone else wish to, uh, make a comment or ask a question, uh, about the fire station update? Hearing none, then, uh, we will move to our next item, which is, uh, three sixty Main Street. Camdr coating system request for site plan modi modification. Rich, you wanna start us with that and then give that, uh, over to the gentleman from Camdr?
Sure. Yeah. So the, um, as you know, three sixty Camdr coating is under construction, which is, uh, out located on Town Line by Franklin Crossman City Mills Pond. Um, they're in working towards completion of the project and a few things have come up, which they're asking the planning board to, uh, to make a modification to the project. Um, they went before the, uh, fire department to get their hazardous material storage license, uh, which included the propane. Uh, they're looking to put the propane tanks below grade on the ground that wasn't originally in the site plan. Um, the second item is changing the curbing in terms of, it is a mix between a monolithic Cape Cod burn and I believe, uh, what up? It's either cut, it's either granite or, uh, precast concrete.
Yeah.
So to make it all uniform, which is a monolithic Cape Cod burn and not mix and match. Um, that's the second request. And then the third request is to move the dumpster, which is, was originally permitted to the rear of the site, up to the front, um, near the loading dock area. And so those are the three, um, requests. Um, I don't is, I don't see. So let me just see here. Who is? I know the contractors here, is the, uh,
Good afternoon, Rich. Dan Iainuzzi.
And I know Dan's here. Is, uh, is Katie?
Joe Meisner's with us also.
All right. Does Katie attend too, or is it just gonna be you folks kind of walking?
Katie could not attend tonight. Um, Joe does have the site plan queued up. If you wanna share your screen, if you're trying to pull up the site plan, Joe can pull that up.
Um, I have it, I have it as well. So I'll just, uh, I'll just. Well, actually, you know what? Let me re, let me take that back. It might be better for Joe, that way he can, uh, he can talk through it. So, all right. I gotta find Joe on my list here. Oh, there he is. Okay. Have control now? Joe?
She muted? Yeah, he's muted. He's muted.
Muted.
All right.
Okay, you can hear me now?
Oh, there he is. Okay.
So just to step back, um, Dan Iainuzzi, uh, owner of Camdr Chemical, three sixty Main Street. Uh, Rich, just wanna say thank you for meeting with us, uh, several weeks back. You know, we tried to meet with Rich just to go over some of the changes that we were proposing and, you know, and ask really what, what the board members might need to see from us, uh, in order to understand uh, what we're doing here. So that's what we're, we've got in front of you here. Um, you know, kind of taking these one at a time, uh, the, the propane tanks were originally slated as two tanks. A- as we did, the, the calculations, uh, that call for the demand of propane and, and what the requirements would be, uh, that increased our tank size from two to three. And the understanding from the, the propane company is that when you exceed two tanks and you're going for three one thousand gallon tanks, that they need to go into the ground. Uh, so that's simply a modification from, you know, two tanks above to three tanks going below. Um, does anyone have any questions about that element of, you know, trying to take, trying to take these one at a time?
Not for me. Not for me.
Not for me.
So that was the, the first change on the agenda. Um, the second cha- change is, you know, I, I, if I told you how many iterations, uh, uh, of this building we've gone through in the past in trying to develop this site, uh, one version was loading docks were in the back of the building. Uh, at which time, based upon how we use that dumpster, it seemed to make most sense to put the dumpster in the back as everything has gone through a dark door and brought out to the dumpster. Um, so when we changed plans and ended on this final version, where the docks moved to the front of the building, uh, there was kind of an oversight on our part where we didn't bring up, hey, we really need to move that dumpster because it just doesn't work for the operation back there. So that's the, that's the second uh, item that we're looking for some relief here tonight. Anyone have any questions on that item?
Yeah, that's the one that sticks in my, my craw a little bit. Um, it's, it couldn't be more visible if you put it right out on the curb, uh, of the, uh, of Main Street. Um, I know it'll be fenced. I know there'll be a gate in front of it and it'll probably, uh, be impervious division, uh, but nevertheless, there it is. Um, couldn't you at least wrap it around the corner of the building and get it out of the way?
Well, we have some, some units back there, some, some dust collectors and some HVAC units that we're gonna have to have access to for maintenance of those units, filter changes and such. Um, you know, as, as far as it being on the curb, uh, Joe, if you can pull down a little to Main Street, you know, you can, you, you all know, we're, we're on that bend of the road. Um, so it's not necessarily on the curb of Main Street. I- i- it's more, you know, adjacent to the existing facility. Uh, in fact, our other dumpster is, is located, you know, it, not in far proximity of that one. It will be screened, it will be a white screening, which would blend in with some of the other elements in the front that, that we were asked to, to put in, uh, being some fencing and some other screening at the loading dock. If you remember, we wanted to screen that loading dock there, so there is an element of screening there. Um, so we, we did feel it would tie in with some of the other, other elements that are in the front.
I'm really, where is the dumpster? I can't see it on the plan.
Um, Joe will put it, Joe will put a cursor on it.
Well, I took control over from Joe, so. Do you see my cursor moving over here to the?
Yeah.
Right there, where's, that's the proposed.
How many dumpsters and what size? How many yards?
That'll be one dumpster and that, that's, uh, a small ten yarder.
And you can't put that someplace else?
Well, in looking at act, in looking at access for that trash removal truck to come in, you know, we don't want it coming through the parking lot. Um, i- i- it just, and if you look at the continuity of, this is our loading dock here. So trucks will be coming in and out of here. I mean, it's just such a simple access point for them to grab and go. Um, literally take.
I, I'm thinking, uh, you see where the, the proposed three thousand gallon underground storage tank is up? Just tuck it up around the corner there somehow, get it out of the line of sight. That's all I'm asking.
Yeah. Hmm, there's not a lot of room there. Uh, there, you only have enough room to get really a pickup truck on the side of that building before it starts to grate off into the rain gardens and things. So there, there's really not a lot of room to get back there with a truck of that size.
If you, if you've got a ten yard dumpster, you obviously don't have much rubbish on a regular basis. Am I correct?
Uh, the, correct.
All right. I mean, if that's the case, then it, it's not gonna be like a busy part of the operation. I agree with Walter. It really, really shouldn't be in the front yard. You, you gotta find a, a better way than that.
Yeah, we just remove it through the loading dock with our truck. You know, it is not, it is something though, even though it's not a lot, we do do it on a, a fairly frequent basis. It's not that we're doing it once a week. You know, it is, it is something though, even though it's not a lot, we do do it on a fairly frequent basis. It's not that we're doing it once a week.
How about other, other board members? Chad, what do, what do you think?
I'm with you. I don't like it in the front and I mean, typically it's, typically it's in the back, kind of somewhat inconspicuous or hidden as much as possible. I mean, I do realize it'll probably, it'll be fenced with gated and unfortunately, the, those gates stay open. I mean, it happens. It just, it just has a potential look unsightly.
Chris?
Yeah, I'm interested in understanding what kind of screening you were proposing. Is it the fencing with the white vinyl strips in between? Or is it something more substantial?
Fencing with the white vinyl strips between, if it, you know, if we wanted to do something more substantial, feeling it would tie in better, we're happy to do that.
Yeah, I'm probably leaning more towards tucking it in a little bit more. It is pretty prominent within that circle.
Gary?
You're, you're right on the edge of the property and there's, is there anything that's convenient where just for another short drive with the truck, you can put it on into the other piece of property?
Quite honestly, we didn't do a deep dive into where else we could relocate it. We were really hoping that, you know, again, given all of the fencing and everything that was happening and the farmer's porch and the screen there, and if we use the right material around that, that we really wouldn't get pushed back and it not being on the Main Street and off to the side such as it is. So we'd really have to go back and take a look at, at where else we might be able to put it on. I'm not sure if on that site, yeah, we'll have to, we'll have to relook at it.
Okay, all right. Thank you. That would, that would be helpful. I think, I think we would agree that, that the changes that you're proposing, and we haven't talked about the third one yet, but nevertheless, are probably considered minor modifications. It's just that we don't like the location of that particular dumpster.
Understand.
Okay, third one is the curb stone.
The curb stone issue, I, I, I've talked to the general contractor, Mr. Curry, on how it happened. You know, he came on a little late in the project. I, I think it was a mess by the civil engineers. You know, we had Cape Cod burn in all the rest of the parking areas and for some reason in this circle up here, there was Cape Cod, there was the great slope granite curbing. You know, the, the, there is, it's pretty clear in the special order where there was a waiver and it had to do with on Main Street, the DPW did chime in and say that they would prefer Cape Cod burn there. So we were given the waiver for the sloped granite as it met the street. And it only makes sense to carry it through the rest of the project. I really, we really can't get our arms around, nor does Hudson have a great answer on, on why that was sloped granite. So we're just looking for the continuity of, of all Cape Cod burn through the project.
I'm comfortable with that. About other board members, okay with that or not?
I think that makes a lot of sense to keep the continuity.
Agreed. Chris?
Yeah, I'm, I'm fine with that.
John? Is that the curved area in the front?
Yeah, the area that's in that red bubble area.
Yeah, if they had, if they had slope granite there, the plow would destroy that in no time. Yeah, we see it happening everywhere. So I think that monolithic burn would be a much better idea. Okay, so two out of three and we, we would ask you to take another look at where that dumpster might be tucked. And other than that, I think you'll get a favorable response on all three.
Well, we do appreciate you getting us on tonight. We appreciate everyone's consideration regarding the two that got approved. Rich, how do we manage this moving forward as far as getting it written into something or how, how does that look?
Yeah, so what I'll do is I'll draft a, a minor modification decision certificate for the board to, they can take a look at it, review it, and then maybe I'll can get it on the 30th agenda just to take care of that one, those two, and then and work on your dumpster and come back.
Okay, sounds good. Again, everyone, thank, thank you for your time tonight.
Oh, you're entirely welcome. By the way, I've been by the building. It looks, looks terrific. You've done a nice job with it.
Thank you very much. We're looking forward to obviously the landscaping and everything coming together and, and, you know, hoping that the town is proud of the project. So thank you.
Thanks, gentlemen.
Okay, um, let's see, the next item is an update on the, the town sewer, in the, in the sewer in the town center, I think, Rich, right?
Well, next is a well, the housing choice.
Housing choice. All right, I'm out of order. You're correct. You're correct. Yeah.
If you, if you might be so inclined to indulge taking, well, I thought maybe take Mill River Heights add a order and then I can come back to that. If that's okay.
Yeah, that's okay with me. Fine.
So in terms of summarize and put in context this request, so Mill River Heights is Ariana Drive, which is off of Myrtle Street. It's a subdivision, I forget how many lots of this, but maybe, I forget the exact number, but anyway. As you recall, the, so there's one left, one lot left at the end of the cul-de-sac to the right. And that lot is currently under covenant and the owner developer has a buyer for which they want to sell that lot to this customer to build a home there. So they want to change surety from a covenant to a insurance bond to place for security to finish the subdivision. I submitted, or excuse me, asked the DPW department to go do a takeoff of what's left to be done from the approved plans, come up with a cost estimate, which was provided to you, which amounts to $76,150, including a 25% contingency. Those are based on rates that we would have to adhere to if we were to have to come in and take over. The south is really ready to go to be completed, but in terms of we're not, you know, we're in March right now, it's not time to finish everything up. So what they want to do is, what I would ask the board if, if it was acceptable, vote to set the bond amount at 76,150. Vote to release the bond, but have the bond reviewed by town council before you would actually come in and sign off on it. I just received a copy late, late today from the insurance company. So I just want to review it, have council review it, make sure everything's in order before, before you would sign off on it. So the applicant is on the Zoom as well.
All right. So what you're asking for is a, is a motion to, to relieve the covenant and substitute a, a bond in the amount of 76,150, correct?
Correct.
Okay. Any questions on this from the board?
No.
Okay, then the chair will entertain a motion to relieve the covenant on that remaining lot and substitute instead a, a bond in the amount of $76,150 for the Ariana Estates, Mill Rivers, Ariana Road, Mill River Estates, Mill River Heights. There we go, Mill River Heights. Do we have a motion?
So moved.
Do we have a second?
Second.
All right, then we'll take a roll call vote. Mr. Peck?
Aye.
Mr. Monfort?
Aye.
Mr. Searle?
Aye.
Mr. Weddleton?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Okay, Rich?
Excellent. Thank you very much. I appreciate it.
All right, very good.
All right, so I'll jump back up to the housing choice.
Yeah, go ahead.
So I did appear before the select board last week in terms of an overview, the housing choice zoning amendment requires, well, I, well, strike that out actually, doesn't quite require. If you want to seek certain grants through the state, which one of them is the Mass Works Program, which is one that the town has utilized more recently for the causeway that was installed on Lawrence Street. And further back, its predecessor, which was called Pete Wedge, was a grant that the town received to do the streetscape improvements in town center. You need to comply with the housing choice provisions for communities that have public transportation. It could be, there's a variety, obviously. In our case, we have commuter rail, it could be bus, it could be ferry and so forth. And really, it's about higher density within a half mile radius of a transportation hub. In our particular case, what they're preparing guidance documents and that being the Department Housing, Community Development, along with the MBTA for cities and towns, how they can comply with this new provision that was enacted by the legislature. And when we were, before town meeting in the spring, last spring, we hit all the points with the one exception that's in the proposed draft, which is a reasonable area. And at the time, well, actually not the time, it says reasonable area in the legislation and now the guidance document in the draft is proposing what constitutes reasonable area as an area which is 50 acres in size based on the minimum density of 15 units per acre. You do the math, it comes up to an area which is zoned for high density residential yielding 750 dwelling units by right. Our zoning changes happen in the spring. We have 16 units per acre. So we comply with that. The total aggregate area right now is less than 50. So what I'm suggesting is that we write a letter to the, to the department about their proposed guidance and suggest that they revisit their reasonable area requirement because it's a few different things, I think, don't really take into account. It just says an area that's 50 acres. It doesn't look at the underlying infrastructure. So it's just an area. Ironically, one of the things that we did was in the B1 zoning changes, we took areas which were already developed with high density through 40B and changed them out of the inner core. Now, if we left it in, we could have played the game and, you know, if we had that crystal ball and we would have met that provision. And so what I'm suggesting is I prepare some comments, have the board review it and we submit it to the department. The comments would come from the planning board as well as the select board. The select board is meeting on the 15th, which is next week, so I would have them review it. You have a special meeting on the 30th. You would have an, I would send it out ahead of time, but have a chance to kind of mull it over. And then submitted by the deadline, which is March 31st. The second part of this is as of May 2nd this year, city and towns have to submit an application of demonstrating how they comply with the new provisions. And you have to put together a plan of action if you don't comply with those provisions. Otherwise, down the road, you wouldn't be able to seek grant funding. So I'm suggesting the first thing is to say, hey, wait a minute, we did, we did quite a bit here. This, this guidance is unreasonable. And make comments to that effect. Maybe the result is they change what is considered reasonable. And when the final guidance comes out, we comply 100%, it's a much easier process for the town. If not, then we have to take a look at it. And we could play the game, frankly, and put in area that we had taken out to comply with it. And, and really don't want to go that way. It doesn't make sense, but if we need to do it, we need to do it because I don't, it's not really as well thought out for communities that, such as ours and others that really don't have that infrastructure to create that density that they're trying to do for these cities and towns.
Okay, that seems like a reasonable proposal. Rich, how many acres do we have in the current B1?
So I mentioned, we're approximately 40 acres. That's in.
Forty in there now. Okay.
Yeah.
Okay. Okay. Well, we look forward to your draft and we'll, we'll take it under advisement and, and deal with it on the 30th.
All right.
Thank you.
The next item on the agenda is similar as you, for you who maybe follow along on the Norfolk Registry of Deeds, there was a decision made by the commissioners to not replace and fund the IT director as an employee of the county for Norfolk. And I sent you a letter that was penned and drafted by Millis urging them to reconsider that. So what I'm asking is to take a look at it, perhaps we collectively, I already have sent something individually, just as a staff member of, you know, outside the planning board, the select board and recognizing the value of, you know, having things available online and having somebody who is overseeing that internally. Consultants can do a good job in lots of ways, but in other ways, they fall short because they don't have that, you know, understanding of the nuances and sometimes the importance of it. They're a contractor, not, no disrespect to contractors, but sometimes, you know, they don't have the urgency to make sure these things are taken care of. So in a non-political way, I think it's important to comment. I think it's valuable, especially based on, you know, with the pandemic and how people really rely on that access today. As more so in the past. So that's something to noodle on. Take a look at it. And if you want, we, I can pen something you can consider. I'm not really going to reinvent the wheel. I think Mills did a nice job. I may tweak it here or there, but it's kind of a template to. And maybe you already know about this. So if anybody intimately more aware of it than myself, yield the floor, but.
Yeah, I, I have been aware of this. I got it in another way as well. And so I'm supportive of it. The letter that the select board and Millis wrote is a great template. We could almost overlay it if, or so chooses to to create a letter very similar, if not almost exactly the same. Have you presented this to the select board to get them to consider sending a letter as well?
You know, I have not, but I will speak to Blythe potentially about, see if I can add that on their agenda for the next one, if not the next select board, but put it, add it to their agenda.
Yeah, okay, fair enough. Well, I guess my thought is the, the records that are held by the Norfolk Registry of Deeds are vital to the functioning of the real estate market here in, in the county. And with all the malware and ransom attacks and whatnot that we've got going on. With all the malware and ransom attacks and whatnot that we've got going on. In the world, it certainly makes sense to me to have a, a, a chief IT guy. In charge of, of the defense. As well as, of course, providing the, the most up to date systems for the operation of, of the registry of deeds. So I don't know why the commissioners have, have chosen. And at this point, it must be six or eight months ago that they made this decision not to fund this. But anyway, I, I support it and I would like the board to, to agree and, and be willing to sign a. Letter, but then again, I don't know how the board feels about it, so Chad, what do you think?
I, I agree with you, I received a letter in the mail that it kind of outlined this, explained it and I feel it's, I mean. Ransomware is up a thousand percent since in the last two years and it's not going away. And we. As Rich said, yeah, consultants are, they're good, but there's nothing like having. Your own staff. On site that can. Manage this and keep, keep us, keep us safe, keep the county safe and. Keep us moving forward.
The registry brings in more money than you can believe and, and they certainly have plenty of money to. To fund this if they needed to. Chris, what do you think?
I'm curious, you know, there was a mention of the consultancy, I did get the letter as well. Wholeheartedly, you know, obviously concerned about this predicament we find ourselves in. What benefits, though, does the consultancy offer us aside from? You know. Probably cost savings is really my question. There is obviously a benefit of having an individual onsite and intimately aware of the, the network architecture and the individuals involved in IT. And your end users as well, which you lose through a consultancy, especially if it's a. Something that's been offshored. I'm much more in favor of the, the personal touch myself, but I am also conscious that one person can't be there for all things at all times. So I, I. I'm in favor of writing the letter, but I would love more information. As well.
Well, but what I know is, is at least one, if not two staff. So this individual is not a, a loner, so to speak.
And I don't think it, I mean, I could be wrong, so I apologize, but I don't think it. You know, I think there still is a consultant. But there is somebody, a staff person managing it to make sure. You get what you think you're getting and make sure things are protected. So it's not. But I could be, I could be wrong, but in terms of. You know, having somebody. To make sure. They're technologically savvy so that the consultant doesn't, you know. Sell you something.
I mean, I.
Yeah.
Ideally, from my perspective, this individual should be driving the strategy of the development of the department going forward, they shouldn't necessarily be. Charged with, you know, the day to day troubleshooting of someone not being able to access their laptop. You know, provided that that's their. You know, form and function. It's absolutely required, they need to have somebody who's focused on understanding, you know, next gen malware attacks as well as ransomware and. Keeping the, you know. Constituents advised of those issues. I, I don't see, you know, personally, the, the true benefit of. Relinquishing the role. But at the same time, I'm not getting the other side of the picture.
Yeah. Well, maybe.
Gary, let's, let's finish it, Gary, go ahead, what do you think?
I wouldn't, I would prefer to see a dedicated person in the position. Especially as Rich said, if there is also some form of consultancy supporting him.
Yeah. John?
I'll vote with the board, no problem.
Okay, thank you. Okay, well, Gary, how about you, what do you think?
I'm a consultant by trade, so I, I have nothing against consultants, but yeah, for this, for this role, I do think the. From especially a security and operations perspective, it's important to have.
Yeah.
Somebody that's constantly leading, leading that strategy.
Okay, got it. All right, well, with that. Rich, we got a consensus of the board. Feel free to draft something for our signature. And to also let the select board know that we are supportive. Of the position and intend to, to release a letter to that effect.
Okay, all right.
All right, thank you, let's see, next item on the agenda. But he, but he, but he, let's see, town meeting zoning. Bylaw amendments and public hearing, right?
So quickly, you did already jump ahead for me in terms of voting to have that special meeting on March thirtieth, we'll hold a public hearing. On the zoning bylaw amendments. The town council will be available to discuss. In greater detail, the recodification aspect of the zoning changes. Can handle some of the other ones that we've already talked about. I met with advisory board last week. They're. Just to give an overview. They're actually asking for. Town council is going to appear before them on the twenty third to talk about the recodification. And then I was going to attend and. Ask the. Vice chair. To join me. For the advisory board meeting, the first one in April, it's the first Wednesday in April. To report on the, the vote of the planning board. On the zoning articles.
First Wednesday in April.
Yeah.
Okay.
What time? The meeting starts at seven, they are. Still, they are virtual, so you don't have to appear in person. And then. In the same time, that kind of segues into the next article, next item on the agenda. Which is, I did talk about the master plan, they would like to. And which I agree in terms of, you know, the advocacy and the, the. I want to say sales pitch of it, but, you know. Yeah, the pitch, so to speak, on the, the value of it, why we need to do it, come from the planning board. Not the town planner. And so. I'll talk to you about that, Chad and whoever else, but it could be a board, but in terms of the. The bottom line is that. There are always these competing capital requests and, you know, they like to hear from the planning board directly, not. Via me, so to speak. Which. I do agree with, I think that, that makes logical sense, so anyway. Why it's important to do it, but also kind of. Boil into something that's concise. So that people want to guess the town meeting. Can relate to it. And, and understand it similar to what we did with the B one, remember we had the flyer, it was really kind of. Concisely laid out for people, so really kind of follow that model.
The, the last time we upgraded this master plan, I believe, was oh seven.
Yes.
And. There was a, a small subcommittee that, of town citizens who took on the responsibility for that upgrade. And they took direction and review from the planning board, I sat on that committee. In this case, we're, we've got money, we're requesting money and we're going to have a. A professional organization under the, the direction of the planning board, I believe. Perform this task, right?
Correct, yep.
Okay, but anyway, the, the planning board led, led that effort and that's what Rich is saying that is required this time around as well.
Next we go to. Minutes, if there is anything else on that topic.
So a motion to review and approve the meeting minutes, can I do both of them together? Or do I need to do two separate ones?
I think you need to do it separately.
Okay, motion to review and approve the meeting minutes from the January twenty sixth, twenty twenty two meeting. Planning board meeting.
So moved.
Second.
Second.
All right, so a roll call vote. Mr. Searle.
I.
Mr. Peck.
Wait, we, we had a meeting on the twenty second?
Twenty six.
Twenty sixth.
Twenty sixth.
Twenty six of twenty two.
Yeah, it was a special meeting, we reviewed the sidewalk.
Yeah, 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 yep, yep. My vote is aye.
Okay. Mr. Monford.
Hi.
Chair votes aye, I believe, Mr. Weddleton.
Did you get John?
Dropped out, yeah.
He dropped off.
All right, another, another. Motion.
Okay, motion to review and approve the planning board meeting minutes from February eighth, twenty twenty two.
So.
Second.
All right, Mr. Peck.
I.
Mr. Searle.
I.
Mr. Monford.
Hi.
Chair votes aye, okay, so that, that takes care of that and now we're on to a housing choice grant. Town center wastewater management plan update.
Yeah, so in terms of going forward, I'm going to retitle this because technically, you know, we've, we've passed the grant and. We're on to the, on to the second part of this in terms of the feasibility analysis. I'd included in your packet the signed scope of work for the next phase. In the evaluation, which is some additional testing. For the viability of it and which includes. Bringing in the hydrogeologist. Geotechnical folks along with Wilber and Curran. Do some testing, some analysis, meeting with the DEP to talk about the findings. What would need or not need in terms of. Going forward. To develop a wastewater, a new wastewater treatment plant. As well as some meeting coverage in that scope of work to meet with the planning board, select board and others to talk about it. To kind of. Kind of funnel this down to. Towards this, you know, a yay or nay decision at some point, we're doing it incrementally. This money is, is. For this work is being funded through a, an earmark. Through the state budget. It's a hundred thousand dollars, we. We're grateful to get that money from the state, so there isn't any local money. Towards this piece of the work right now. And so that's pretty much it, they'll come, and they'll come, I'll obviously be back in touch with you. All and as we go along. And I have been having several conversations with property owners along the way. And one of the things that always comes up, obviously, is the cost. Well, this next level gets us. At least a better. Able to have a more intelligent answer as we keep going along. So that's, that's part of the next step that we. We'd be taking, so that's just informational purposes.
Okay, thank you, Rich.
All right, the next.
Go ahead, Southwood.
Okay, so the next item on the agenda is updating Southwood Hospital, I include the signed contract between. Town Norfolk and Metropolitan Planning Council to. Do the. Planning study for the. For the Southwood Hospital site from a planning. You know, development, redevelopment. One of the things. In the scope of work in the beginning. Is really introductory meeting with the planning board to talk about. The planning. At the grant and executing it going forward, so. If you recall Josh Fiala, who worked with, with us previously on the B one zoning is the lead planner from MAPC. So he just wants to. He asked me to ask you in terms of. When he could probably. Meet with the planning board and the public, obviously, is invited to. Just have really more of a kickoff. Meeting on this topic.
Is, is there room on the April twelfth agenda for that to happen?
I think there is, actually.
Well, then let's, let's. Put him on the April twelfth agenda then.
Okay. That's it, turns the update for that from my end.
Okay, oh, I think. You might want to say something about the town's LSP.
The. That's something that's. The town has been evaluating the. The possibility of hiring. Having the LSP represent the town as through the environmental assessment. Of Southwood Hospital and so. We've released. Think put together a scope of work and now we need to seek the funding for that scope of work. So that's the next step in terms of that work.
Yep. Okay. All right, I think we've come to the end of our agenda unless there's any other business, is there any other business for this evening?
The only thing I'll bring up is August ninth, we're showing as a future meeting, we won't have Chad, we won't have Rich and you won't have me either, so we should entertain a new date.
Right. Okay.
Happy to defer to the next meeting and.
Yeah, why don't we, why don't we give, why don't we have Betsy here with us when we, when we make that decision?
That's fair, and Karen has her hand up.
Hi, I just, I know it's really late, but I didn't know if you wanted any update from the Southwood PIP team or not. We sort of have a positive update tonight that we wanted to share with everyone.
Sure, go ahead, please.
So as you know, you know, back on February third, there was the draft phase two scope of work presented by Bob Byrd and we submitted our. Comments back to them. And now we're kind of on a holding pattern until, they have until April twenty fourth. Based on the Massachusetts contingency plan to respond to those comments. But in the meantime, we have been working fairly closely with Bob Byrd. To track down some former employees that used to work at Southwood and we've already conducted two interviews with them along with Mr. Byrd. Joanne Yatsu Hashi, who as many of you know, her husband was chief of staff. There for over twenty years, they actually lived on the property. And we also had an interview with Mike O'Leary, who started working there. Once Naponton Valley Health Systems bought it, he came on scene about nineteen eighty two, he was the chief engineer. And he had a lot of good information for Bob Byrd as far as the operations and. We discovered or he informed them that at one point the oil. Boiler system was converted to gas, so that was kind of new news, so I think when they go to investigate more on the buildings, they'll have to find out where those gas lines are. So we are working, the PIP groups continuing to work on reaching out to other former employees to see, you know, if we can help. Bob Byrd, you know, close any of the, the data gaps. The data gaps that they had back in the phase two scope of work. And I think he is appreciative of our efforts, efforts there, sorry, I'm extremely tired at this point. So that's about it, that's our update.
Well, good, thank you for, for that, appreciate your keeping us up to date. Okay, any other items? If not. Then the chair will entertain a motion to adjourn. Second, we have a second. A second, all right, I would take a roll call vote, Mr. Peck.
I.
Mr. Searle.
I.
Mr. Monford.
I.
Chair votes aye, and what is your opinion, Mr. Sorry, Gary.
My opinion for closing the meeting is aye.
Thank you, sir. Well, thank you, everybody, and we will see you on the thirtieth.
Good night, everyone.
Aye.
Good night.